Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Education. At this time, can everyone please silence your cellphones? If you wish to testify today, please go up to the sergeant's desk to fill out a testimony slip. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon and welcome to the hearing. Good afternoon and welcome to today's education oversight hearing on 3K funding cuts and delayed reimbursements to early childhood providers. I'm Rita Joseph, Chair of the Committee. Thank you to everyone present here today and those of you who are testifying remotely. At today's hearing, we will also hear testimony on the following legislation: Introduction Number 843, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, which is a local law to amend the Administrative Code of the City of New York in relation to reporting on payment to early childhood care and education providers; and Resolution 164, sponsored by Councilmember Lynda Lee, which calls upon the New York City Department of Education to establish Diwali as an official holiday for public school students. Four and a half months ago, the committee held a hearing on early childhood programs in the city. At the hearing, we received ample testimony that DOE has not fulfilled its contracts obligations to reimburse early childhood education providers. That is, pre-K and 3K centers offering publicly funded childcare have not been paid for the full amount for their FY22 contracts, a payment cycle that ended June 30, 2022. As a result, number of early childhood providers such as Sheltering Arms, which provide care to 400 kids in the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Queens, have permanently shut down. Last fall, DOE entered into an agreement with city council to resolve delayed reimbursement, yet the issue persists. At a January 2023 hearing, the Mayor's Office of Contract Services testified that they are working on the backlog of unpaid contracts, including those that belong to early childhood education providers. According to recent press reports, including a February ABC piece, DOE blames the delays on providers for not properly uploading their invoices into the city's system. Meanwhile, a January 2023 Center for Urban Future report revealed across the largely decentralized contracting and reporting system. This includes duplicate requirements within and across agencies, barriers to reimbursements, excessive audits, and burdensome discretionary funding requirements. Moreover, the Administration November's Plan Program to Eliminate the Gap, or PEG, reduced the 3K budget in FY24 by $568 million, with the explanation that the city is reallocating federal stimulus to reflect the right sizing of the universal 3K expansion. Budget based on the FY23 level. This means canceling and planned increase of program from $55,000 to $61,000 seats in 2023. Ultimately, all of this is hurting our children, their families, and hardworking early childhood providers. This is particularly concerning for cities' low-income residents and communities of color, who desperately need more extended day and year seats. We need to stay on top of this and ensure that this does not happen again. At this hearing, the committee is interested in securing a timeline for when these contracts will be fully paid, including 2023 contracts, and how this process will be improved going forward. The committee is also interested in learning how the city plans to serve families and early childhood education providers who have negatively impacted due to delays in the city's complicated contracting processes, including what role the newly created Mayor's Office of Childcare and Early Childhood Education will play in addressing these issues. I would like to thank the committee staff, as well as my own staff, for all of the hard work they put in for today's hearing. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Sanchez, Councilmember Shulman, Councilmember Menon, Councilmember Felice, Councilmember Brewer, Councilmember De La Rosa, and Councilmember Hanks, Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Shaker, Councilmember Narcisse, and Councilmember Lee. Before we swear in administration, we will hear from the sponsors of Introduction 843 and Resolution Number 164 to deliver some remarks on their legislation. Councilmember Menon.
Thank you so much. I, first of all, want to thank Chair Joseph for holding today's important hearing on delayed reimbursements to early childhood education providers. In the fall of last year, this committee heard from the administration on this same topic, and we were informed that just 62% of providers were being paid in a timely manner. That is frankly unacceptable. That is why my bill, Intro 843, would require the Department of Education to report each month on payments to early childhood care and education providers. This legislation would highlight the number of invoices in total, the number of invoices paid in full or partially paid, the average amount of time it takes to process, and the number of invoices outstanding in value and in percentage. I thank the 15 cosponsors, especially the chair, in joining me on this legislation requiring accountability from DOE. Transparency will lead to more timely payments. My office has heard from early childhood care providers that have been left unpaid by DOE and are in danger of closing. We are in a childcare crisis, and since 2015, over 1,400 childcare centers have closed in New York City. We've seen firsthand the city exacerbate this crisis when Sheltering Arms Children and Family Services, a provider serving over 400 children across three boroughs, was forced to close in October 2022 after not being reimbursed by the DOE. This is a critical moment for early childcare, and I hope to hear that payment to providers has improved in 2023. I thank the chair for allowing me to speak, and I want to thank the bill drafter, Sahar Mazami, and Beth Golub for working on the bill, and from my team, my Chief of Staff Jonathan Shutt, and my Legislative and Budget Director Brandon Jordan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Menon. Councilmember Lee.
Hi. Thank you so much, Chair Joseph and colleagues, for hearing this resolution at today's hearing. I just wanted to say, on behalf of the AAPI community, the 1.1 million Asian-Americans who call New York City home, it is my honor and privilege to introduce Resolution 164, calling on the state to have our schools recognize Diwali as an official holiday. And as someone who was part of the efforts to help recognize Lunar New Year as a holiday as well, this is something that's very personal, and also recognizing we have one-fifth of our public school students who observe Diwali and are forced to make the choice of either celebrating or sending their kids to school or keeping them at home. And so, this is an important piece of legislation, and I think that it celebrates the diversity of our city as well as recognizing the importance of different cultures and understanding how important it is to educate our students about the different cultures and holidays that are celebrated throughout our city. So I'm very proud to sponsor this. And also, on our state side, we have colleagues that are, you know, putting forth similar bill. Assemblywoman Jennifer Rajkumar, as well as Senator Joseph Adabo and Senator John Liu are also proposing similar bills at the state level. So I'm happy to help and, you know, push this effort on the city council side. So I definitely hope that my colleagues will join me in this resolution. And I also want to thank our mayor, because he has also said multiple times that he is supportive of this. So we're very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. I would like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person today that you must fill out a witness slip, which is located on the desk of the Sergeant at Arms near the front of this room. If you wish to testify in Introduction 843 or Resolution 164, on the witness slip, please indicate which legislation, whether you're here to testify in favor of or in opposition to the legislation. I also want to point out that there will not be voting on any legislation today to allow as many people as possible to testify. Testimony will be limited to three minutes per person, and we will hear in-person testimonies before hearing those on Zoom. I will now turn it over to Committee Council Nadia Jean-François to announce the first panel.
Good morning, everyone. I will now call our first panel. When your name is called, please come to the front table. Gregory Brender, Irene Lu, Alicia Murphy, Joyce McClamie, Elizabeth Byrd, and Dr. Sanai Beckles Canton. Gregory Brender, you may begin your testimony.
Thank you so much, Chair Joseph, and all the members of the Education and all the many committees who've come here today. We really appreciate the council's strong support for early childhood education and so many of you showing up for this hearing, as well as previous events like the press conference around this. I'm from Daycare Council of New York. We are the membership organization of early childhood centers in New York City. Our members provide both center-based and family childcare in over 200 sites in all five boroughs. Most of our members operate with contracts with the New York City Department of Education, while others use other funding sources such as federal Head Start contracts and fee-for-service. A DCC NY member organizations employ over 4,000 New Yorkers, the majority of whom are Black and Brown women. And we're an active member of the Campaign for Children, and our testimony reflects the priorities and goals of that campaign. We'll start with the cuts to the expansion of universal 3K. This is not, the universal 3K is a promise to move forward towards universal childcare in New York City, and moving away from it is moving backward in an important thing for New York's communities and for families. We recommend, instead of the cut, that the city release an RFP for the expansion of 3K for All, allowing contracts for expanded programs to start in July and services in September, and that this would include extended-day, extended-year programs, which the state has increased funding for. Convert more existing through 3K school-day, school-year seats to extended-day, extended-year seats, and ensure 3K expansion efforts prioritize creating new capacity for extended-year-round seats. Invest in robust resources in linguistically and culturally appropriate multimedia marketing campaigns to encourage enrollment in early childhood education, and reform enrollment procedures so that community-based organizations have the options of directly enrolling children into their 3K programs. I want to also talk, and there's more of these details in the written testimony, about the late payments to DOE programs. This remains at crisis levels. We talked about this back in the hearing in October, and that did lead to some changes, but it did not lead to the systemic reforms necessary to make this a sustainable system. We need to have ongoing systemic changes that ensure that early childhood providers are paid on time. The late payments have led to organizations missing payroll, meaning low-paid workers, essential low-paid workers, are missing their paychecks, which means they're missing their rent, they're missing their expenses, they themselves are struggling. It's led many providers to take out personal lines of credit, and it's caused a lack of, it's caused many people to leave the workforce because they don't want to work as much as they love working in early childhood education in places that can't pay them on time. We have some data around this that we have in our written testimony, but suffice it to say that there were some actions taken, and we appreciate the rapid response teams that were developed in response to the concerns about FY22 payments. However, those changes need to be completed. There are still FY22 payments that are owed, and we need to make the changes for FY23 and going on. We're eight months into fiscal year 2023, and many providers are still unable to invoice. They either don't have approved budgets or are lacking some other piece of information to ensure that their programs are able to invoice, and they're not getting paid. They are getting by on the bubble gum and wrapping, and it's a true struggle for the workforce and for the families they serve. So we have a series of recommendations to improve the systems to ensure late payments don't continue. First is to immediately complete all back payments, bringing all center-based providers to at least 75% of their full contract value for FY22, which was guaranteed in the request for proposals back in 2019. Increase the FY23 advanced payments to 75% of contract value. This way, the city is only putting out the amount that has guaranteed in the request for proposals, and you're ensuring that the greatest amount of funding actually goes immediately to providers, that they can build up the reserves in order to pay their own staff and pay their landlords and other vendors on time. Extending the provider's ability to batch and submit multiple months of invoices and maintain, we just learned, actually just two days ago, this is now being allowed for FY2023. We hope that this can be done in the future. It is necessary that there are times that invoices are backed up. Organizations need to be able to submit them all at the same time so that they can get any backup payments paid. And then to separate the system from enrollment and data collection from the system responsible for invoicing and payments. Most of the other human services have moved on to the passport system run by the Mayor's Office of Contract Services. This appears to be working more effectively at assuring on-time payments than the city's pre-kid system is as a payment system. So we propose separating those systems and moving the payment on to the passport system. Finally, one of the most important changes we need to make in early childhood education is to fulfill the promise of salary parity for the early childhood workforce. The early childhood workforce are paid lower than their counterparts in public schools, and this is a product of discrimination against a workforce that is almost more than 90% women and in New York City, and particularly mostly women of color. We need to move to parity, not just to ensure that the programs have high-quality staff, but to fulfill our commitment as a city to a city that is committed to racial justice and to women's justice. Thank you so much for taking on this issue. We really appreciate the council's support and your work with us and with Department of Education to address this crisis, and we look forward to continuing to work with you to ensure that providers are paid on time, that all children in New York City have access to high-quality early childhood education that meets their families' needs, and that the workforce who supports this essential service is fairly paid for their incredible work. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Gregory. We will now move on to our next panelists. To all of our panelists, please state your name for the record before you begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Sanai Beckles Canton. I am an early childcare provider. I just want to read what I have. One second. Good afternoon, City Council. I would like to first thank you for this opportunity to share. As a childcare provider in New York City, myself and several educators have been a victim of this slow payment, slow response to pay early childcare providers. We are a new program that, over the course of three years, have invested our life savings in creating a program in our community to support families and children. But unfortunately, due to the systematic bureaucracy that we have experienced with the Department of Education and the Department of Health, our school has yet to open fully. Unfortunately, our contract was approved in July of 2021, but we have still not received one payment. And as a result, we have had to take out loans to pay staff. We've had to lay staff off. And unfortunately, while the Department of Education has stated that they are working swiftly to support programs like myself, due to the lack of response and communication, the unclear systems that we have to send documentation to, there is not any follow-up. Very often, we are told that the persons who once was in those positions are no longer working, and we are not given any other follow-up. My question and concern is that, as a small, as a small pre-K program, it is important that we get clarity, understanding, and that there's a cohesiveness among the different city agencies that support us. So my hope is that I will support this legislation to actually bring accountability and transparency in a much more quick and swift way to support organizations like me so that we don't have to close our doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sanai. Next panelist.
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Joyce McClamie. I'm from 1332 Fulton Avenue Daycare in the Bronx. I am also the Vice President of Local 205. I stand in for all of our members of daycare workers. I thank the City Council for hosting this meeting. It seems DOE refuses to honor their word when it comes to community-based centers. Centers are still going through tremendous hardships when it comes to funding. You have directors paying their staff out of their own pockets, and it shouldn't be. Centers should not have to keep taking out bridge loans to pay their expenses as far as staff payroll, rent for their centers, and other expenses. When Chair Joseph and Chancellor Banks had the press conference in the latter part of 2022, we were assured that everything would be worked out, but it still has not happened. We are still going through where invoices are not being paid on time. Granted, DOE has a system that they use, but it was never brought to the community-based centers that they should have a training so our bookkeepers would know exactly how to fill out these invoices. They fill them out the best they can, they submit them, and then when they refuse them, then it takes six, seven months for them to get it right. This has to stop. Centers are really suffering. As it's been brought out before, centers are closing, centers are having tremendous hardships, and we shouldn't have to go through that. Because I'm a center, I work in a center, and I care for our members. I care for our children. These are our small children. Daycare is their foundation, and we should be able to stand for our children. And we are in communities where women of color, single parents, and we provide that service, a service that's needed much. And DOE has to come and step up to the plate. They agreed to the 75%, but a lot of centers are still not getting their funding, and we have to come to an agreement, and DOE has to honor their word. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joyce. Next panelist.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Thank you. My name is Alicia Murphy. I am the Deputy Executive Director at Citizens Committee for Children of New York, and thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today. As you may know, CCC has a long history of advocating to protect and expand early care and education services in New York City. We've been so proud to live and work in a city that has been a leader in the expansion of universal pre-K and 3K over the last many years. We've also been incredibly proud to have the opportunity to advocate alongside our partners on the Campaign for Children and the many providers, some of which are here today, who have moved mountains in order to provide services in the face of incredible obstacles over the past several years. We wanted to talk a little bit today about some of the pieces of our testimony that elevates the concerns that we've heard from contracted programs about their experience over the past three years, some of which you've already heard about, and I have no doubt that you'll hear more from panelists later today. For one, the start of the pandemic was an entirely new system coming online due to the transition of ACS contracts to the Department of Education and the implementation of new contracts as a result for both the family childcare system and the contracted system for birth-to-five programs. Programs experienced at the start of the pandemic, a shuttering of their doors in the initial days, and followed by hybrid and then in-person services. They were also serving communities that were hardest hit by the health and economic impacts of the pandemic on households, and the young children that these providers were serving were not eligible for vaccines until the summer of 2022. Some of this context you can see in the data presentation that we have included in the back of our testimony today. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge Maria Drobjjak, who is my colleague from CCC, who put together this data presentation. And if there are any questions today or in the future, please don't hesitate to ask them. This data provides a really vivid illustration that the expansion that has taken place has not been responsive to the needs of children and families in this city. It does not currently have the capacity to serve infants and toddlers to meet the needs for families with young children, and it is largely made up of school-day and school-year services, as opposed to extended-day and year-round services. From our discussions with providers, we know that these factors have impacted enrollment and retention of families at a time when services were critically needed. And we also continue to hear distress from providers about the payments owed for fiscal year 2022, and we fear that the payment delays for fiscal year 2023 are adding to an already unacceptable level of fiscal strain and instability. On top of that, the proposed cuts to 3K for All is moving in the wrong direction and fails to take action on the investments and operational reforms that are critically needed to stabilize and strengthen the system. I'd like to echo the recommendations that have been made so far by our Campaign for Children partners, namely Gregory spoke to many of them, and just to elevate a few, which might be a little bit reiterating some of what he shared. But, and there's more information in our testimony about these recommendations. But we hope that there will be prioritization to immediately paying all center-based providers for fiscal year 2022 and increasing the fiscal year 2023 advanced payments to 75% of the full contract value. This is needed to address emerging and serious payment delays for the current fiscal year. We also hope to see a commitment to fund current 3K program levels and restoring the timeline for the 3K expansion, and to convert existing 3K school-day and school-year seats to extended-day, year-round seats, and ensure expansion efforts prioritize creating new capacity for extended-day, year-round seats across all age cohorts. We hope to see funding for a new labor contract that advances salary parity between center and school-based services, service teachers and staff, and to ensure that home-based family childcare providers benefit from the increased market rate. Again, I would like to express our profound appreciation for Chair Joseph's and her fellow committee members for hosting this hearing today. CCC and our Campaign for Children partners look forward to working with the city council to advance these goals and put children and families front and center as the budget process proceeds. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alicia. Next panelist.
Hi, Elizabeth Byrd. I'm with Educational Alliance. Thank you, Chair Joseph, and members of the Education Committee for this opportunity to testify today. I'm Elizabeth Byrd. I'm the Director of Public Policy at Educational Alliance. We are a settlement house with community centers located throughout the Lower East Side and East Village. Educational Alliance was one of the first Head Start pilot programs in the nation in 1965, and subsequently opened one of the first early Head Start programs in 1995. Today, we offer center and home-based education for children ranging from birth to age five through Head Start, as well as DOE universal pre-K and 3K. As a longstanding provider of early, high-quality early childhood education programs, we truly value this opportunity to offer feedback on DOE's delayed contract payments as well as proposed funding cuts for early childhood education. In FY22, we operated our early childhood programs without a registered contract for over six months. In that time, we could not invoice the city for program costs, which totaled $754,000. To cover these costs, we are forced to draw down funds raised through private philanthropy and other means, siphoning off resources desperately needed for other programming. This is a fundamentally flawed approach to contracting. When the city delays its payments to providers, it essentially borrows interest-free from our bottom line while we have to leverage funds to cover the costs associated with programming. Meanwhile, the city has never held accountable for these additional costs, and elected officials do not have to account for this covert way of operating. Our FY23 contract is still unregistered six months after the school year began. In my written testimony, I've included some concerns about the proposed cuts to the early childhood sector that were included in the mayor's preliminary budget. I would just like, in brief, to add here that I urge the council to question the administration about these proposed cuts and their potential impacts on New York City's children and families. As it is, our DOE contracts do not fully cover the costs associated with high-quality programming, in particular, the need to increase rates for wages, to offer longevity bonuses, and other incentives to encourage staff retention. and other incentives to encourage staff retention. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Next panelist?
Thank you, Councilmember Joseph, and members of the Council Education Committee for the opportunity to testify today and for convening this really important hearing. My name is Irene Lu. I'm the Senior Research Analyst at United Neighborhood Houses. We represent 46 neighborhood settlement houses, including Educational Alliance and 40 in New York City. And along with partners at CCC and Daycare Council, UNH is also a founding member of the Campaign for Children. Our New York City members operate 70 DOE-contracted center-based childcare programs, including pre-K and 3K programs. Nine of our members run DOE-contracted family childcare networks and tend to operate Head Start, our early Head Start programs, that are directly contracted with the Federal Office of Head Start. Collectively, our Settlement House members serve roughly 12,000 children under age five citywide. So I also want to reiterate, echo a lot of what has already been said in terms of late payments, and also some of the fixes that partners at CCC and Daycare Council very recommended. But I also want to shed some more light on some of the provider stories and the impact of delayed payments on providers in our network. We appreciate the changes that DOE has made to address delayed payments, including the Rapid Response Team, but we have heard from providers that they are continuing to experience significant difficulties in getting FY22 and FY23 invoices paid, as well as significant delays in having their FY2023 budgets approved. One of our members operating several center-based early learn programs and a pre-K program reported the city still owed them nearly $1.3 million for FY22 contracts as of January 13th. And even more alarming, nearly eight months since the start of the current fiscal year, a number of our members still haven't received any reimbursements for FY23 aside from advances. At the same time, the DOE notified providers earlier this week that they would begin recouping FY23 advances starting this month, although providers are still owed almost eight months of payments for FY23 contracts. And one of our members has also shared they have worked with as many as 20 different DOE staff members to resolve an issue. Other members have shared that communication and messaging from the DOE is often disjointed and inconsistent when it comes to certifying attendance reports and approving enrollment, which are further adding to payment delays. Rather than devoting their time to delivering high-quality early childhood programming to children and families in their communities, providers have reported they are spending as much as 12 hours a day to ensure that budgets are approved and to verify children in the system. One of our members actually shared recently that this work is, their exact words, "We're extremely time-consuming, exhausting. We're paid to serve the community, but that energy is getting eaten up by this dysfunction." And a lot of providers in our network have been experiencing severe cash flow and hardship due to delayed payments. And one Settlement House member informed us that as of January 30th, they are still owed more than $200,000 for FY23, and are currently deferring the purchase of classroom supplies and other nonessential items so that they can make payroll. And they noted they're working with the severe budget deficit beginning of the year, but then must scramble to spend the $200 remaining in their budget usually by the end of the fiscal year after the DOE has finally approved their invoices. And to kind of reiterate, the recommendations have already been made in terms of fixes. We have heard from providers that batch invoicing and multi-month submission has really been helpful, and as Gregory pointed out, the DOE recently informed providers they would give them this option, extend this option for FY23, but we really hope that this option will be extended beyond FY23 and into FY23 and beyond because it has been helpful in addressing the backlog. And I also want to touch on briefly on what has also been mentioned, but salary parity, which really does impact enrollment in 3K and early childhood programs, and just the staffing shortages and the staffing crisis in our system due to competition with the DOE and higher vacancies that providers are experiencing that are making it difficult for providers to serve more families. Because center-based programs, when they have staff shortages, they can't run at full capacity due to the mandatory children-adult ratios. One of our members reported that has received requests for childcare support from asylum-seeking families but cannot serve them because they don't have enough staff. They have a waiting list of about 65 children and a bunch of empty classrooms, so they don't have the staff. And another member has told us that they have a program that is half-staffed and half-enrolled, and they are having difficulty recruiting staff when their certified teachers earn $10,000 less than what the DOE pays for certified teachers at a school-based site. So we really hope that the administration will really help stabilize the early childhood education workforce in the city and fund a new labor contract that ensures that staff left out of the 2019 pay parity agreement, including early childhood directors, support staff at community-based organizations, and special education teachers are included as part of pay increases, that longevity is factored into salary increases, and that there's a minimum wage floor of at least $25 for support staff. And the last point I want to make is just regarding the unfilled seats and under enrollment. The rapid expansion, as Alicia mentioned before, it created, there are excess seats in the system in certain communities, but under enrollment or unfilled 3K seats don't reflect reduced demand from families for this program. Instead, it reflects a mismatch between the type of care that is offered, school-day, school-year care instead of the full-day, year-round care that families need. And providers in our network have reported struggling to meet the demand for extended day seats for three- and four-year-olds, and that they don't have the flexibility to open up more seats and change over seat types. And we have heard from providers that the DOE is starting to address this in more detail and really survey providers to address demand, but we believe that more needs to be done. DOE also controls the enrollment process, and so parents don't have the ability to connect directly with providers to enroll their children when seats do become available. So we also urge the city to reform enrollment procedures so that community-based providers have the option of directly enrolling children whose families apply for 3K, pre-K, or childcare. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to start with questioning for the panel with Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much for all of your decades of service in each and every organization. So my question is basically what we just heard, because the mayor keeps stating, "Oh, we have not enough children to fit in the seats." I hear that all the time. It's obviously not true. So I wanted to know a little bit more, if you could expand on the mismatch. We all know that if you're going to go back to work, if you are working, you need full day. We also know that you need to be paid parity, and we also know that you need toddler and small, small baby service, and that may not be what is being offered, and that's why people aren't going to 3K. So I just wanted to hear a little bit more about that, number one. Number two, why are you told that you can't use passport? Gregory mentioned that. Those are my two questions.
So I'll start with the first one unless someone else wants to go. So with regards to the mismatch, yes, I think that one of the solutions is converting some of the 3K and pre-K seats that are school-day, school-year, so six hours and 20 minutes, into extended day, extended year, which are all year-round, so include summer months and based on the workday instead of the school day. The other part to the enrollment question is also about outreach. You probably all remember in 2014, when pre-K was first expanding, you couldn't walk a block without being accosted about joining pre-K or seeing a sign for pre-K. We need to have a campaign to make people aware of what's available to them and able to access the slots that are there. And so relaunching a campaign that is culturally and linguistically suited to the neighborhoods, diverse neighborhoods throughout New York City, and has outreach through community organizations, houses of worship, I think will also help ensure that you see higher enrollment throughout the system, both in school-day, school-year, but also in extended day, extended year. I think we do have some opportunities to see increased expansion in extended day, extended year because of what's happening at the state, where last year in the state budget, the legislature and governor increased eligibility, and Governor Hochul has proposed increasing eligibility again to 85% of area median income. So we're going to have more families who will qualify for extended day, extended year programs, which are means-tested. And then the second question on passport, I don't know, I know that, I don't know why it hasn't been, I'm not sure, maybe someone else does know.
We'll wait to ask the next panel. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Narcisse?
I want to say thank you for your service. This is a vital service that you all providing in the city of New York. And as a mom of four, I know I needed the service all the time when I was raising my own children. And as a businessperson listening to all you saying, this is outrageous because I have a couple of questions to ask you. How many, I mean, how many of you can access loans to the bank waiting for payment? Can you access?
I can definitely answer that. As a new MWB, I was not able to access loans to the bank. It was through support of my former borough president, Gil Brewer, as support helping me do Upper Manhattan Empowerment Zone. But a person like me who have invested my life savings in this, I am, at the end, I've taken my retirement just to pay staff. But no, I don't have access because I don't have enough equity, and I don't have the support as a new small business in New York City.
Okay. How long it will take, I mean, how long usually takes DOE to pay you, to get your paycheck after you submit your invoices?
I've submitted my documents, and I get no response. I've had to go to elected officials to assist me. So they often say that the person in the position no longer works there, they refer you to someone else. So it's been months, and it has been very gruesome and traumatic for myself and my team.
And I can attest to that. We just got our June invoice approved January 10th. Our July invoice is pending, so we're still waiting on that. So I went to a town hall meeting last month with the chancellor and his staff. I asked the question, "How long does it take for an invoice to be approved?" I was told two weeks, but sometimes it takes months. And when you reach out to the person that's handling, they never email you back, you reach out to their supervisor, they don't email you back, so you have no correspondence. So it takes months and months and months to get an invoice approved.
So honestly, you cannot stay in business because if you don't get paid, right?
Exactly.
Is there a time that you cannot pay your staff?
Yes. I've been faced with that three times, and I had to reach out to church members and people to assist me and do a GoFundMe page. It is very heartbreaking and traumatic. And like many childcare providers, you want to leave the profession.
I can relate. That's why I'm asking this question. I've been there. So how many of you hire staff locally from the environment where you are functioning of small businesses?
My entire staff all live in the community, was raised in the community, and we all came together to serve our community.
So it's difficult. So I understand, and I think that's the reason the chair, Chair Joseph, that's the reason we're here, I mean, to support small businesses, I mean, especially the services that you're providing in our community, which is vital. So thank you for being here. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Joyce. Has the response team reached out to you and offered their support in your invoicing?
No. Whenever we reach out to them, we don't get a response right away. It takes months before they respond back, so that's a big issue.
So communication lack of. Thank you so much. Next person, Councilmember Schulman.
Thank you, and thank you for coming here today to testify on this important issue. So a question I have, and this is maybe for the admin, but so in your testimony, Ms. Murphy, you said that there were 33,000 seats unfilled in school year 2022. Do we have a breakdown, is there a breakdown of where that is, and are there waiting lists? I know you mentioned waiting, are there waiting lists now, or there not?
Is it all right if I ask my colleague to speak to that question?
Sure, absolutely.
Sure. We don't have the data on the...
You have to sit and begin them.
And please state your name for the record.
Sure.
Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. It's Drogjak Maria on the CCC's team doing the analysis of the admin data coming from the DOE and ACS. So we did not include a breakdown in the testimony, but we know pre-pandemic, we had unused seats in centers. So pre-pandemic, there were like around 20,000 unused seats, around 13,000 in centers, around 5,000 in schools, and around 4,000 in family providers. As the city added new capacity with new contracts, family and center-based contracts, city also mainly added capacity in the school-day, school-year seats. So pre-pandemic, out of the entire contracted system, 75% for school-day, school-year seats across all age groups. So we are adding new seats with the school-day, school-year only, and we are getting increased capacity but increased number of unused seats. So there were 33,000 in school year 21, 22. We can break the data and share it with you by community district.
That would be great. And you're telling us that you believe those seats can be filled?
We are certain that those seats can be filled. We are speaking to providers, we are speaking to parents. We know that parents' hours, I know our hours are not six hours, 20 minutes. And I know that I, as a parent, struggle with after-school care, and sometimes even if I'm there to pay for the care, there are no seats available. So there is like a whole ecosystem in the after-school care that is adding to the complexity.
Thank you, because I felt it was important to hear from you before we talked to the administration. So I appreciate the information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Menon?
Thank you so much, Chair. First of all, I can't tell you how heartbreaking and distressing it is to hear this testimony. Just months ago, the council passed and the mayor signed five bills, which are my bills, to create universal childcare. So we would be the first city in the country to implement universal childcare. We did this, of course, for so many different reasons. We know that 1,400 childcare facilities have closed in recent years. We're never going to be able to implement universal childcare if we can't fix this payment problem. So it's just heartbreaking to hear this testimony. I really have two questions. One would be for either the Daycare Council, United Neighborhood Houses, or anyone who's really dealing with a lot of the providers. I'm just curious how many providers you have heard from who have said that they are at risk of closure because of this non-payment issue? If you could really quantify that, if possible.
I don't really have a number on it. We've definitely heard from a bunch, and you know, one of the challenges in the early childhood field and probably several fields in the human services is everyone really tries to do what's best. So you know, if it were a company building a bridge, they'd probably just stop building a bridge at this point. And early childhood providers sometimes struggle beyond, beyond what they should be doing to keep open. So we do know, of course, and now you know of Sheltering Arms, which had closed. And just some of the data I have from a survey we did a while back was, we had surveyed providers, and 41.5% of them had either missed payroll or delayed vendor payments due to their delayed payments from DOE.
My second question is about the, we're getting a lot of complaints where people are saying they're not sure who to talk to at DOE about the reimbursements. So I'm curious for any of the panelists, if you could answer, what type of guidance have you received about who are you supposed to contact at DOE on a non-payment or late payment issue?
The issue is the person you work with as your budget analyst is the person that you're normally supposed to connect with. But when that person leaves that position, you have to email their supervisor, and that person is no longer in that position. So you're kind of just emailing around hoping that somebody will answer you, and oftentimes it takes weeks or months. And so it is not clear who you go to. I don't even know what the structure is to get back payments because it changes so frequently and... and there's no human being you can speak to for guidance. You just have to keep emailing and hope that somebody will respond to you.
So D O E is not proactively sending any communication about who needs to be contacted?
No.
Okay.
Can I say at my site, we do have a contact person, but when you email her, she doesn't respond. You email her boss, he doesn't respond. So you're, you're constantly emailing and not getting any answers.
Okay. That's clearly unacceptable, so thank you for that testimony.
Thank you. I'd like to call on councilmember Felice.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. First, let me start by thanking our chair, Rita Joseph. Thank you so much for doing a great job leading on the many different issues related to education. I also want to thank my colleagues who have bills before this committee today. And I also want to thank all of you. Thank you for serving our youngest students. We're very grateful and very thankful for the work that you do. And let me also say that all of you deserve better. All of you and also your team and also our, especially our students, they deserve better and what's happening is outrageous and also it's unbelievable. So a few questions. Generally, let's say out of the last ten payments, how many of them have been delayed?
All of mine.
All.
Okay. I'll be interested in hearing from everyone on the panel. All. Okay. And by how long are payments generally delayed by? How much time, more or less roughly? Are you talking about two months, four months?
Sometimes it's three, four, five months before we get payments.
Would be interested in hearing from everyone on the panel on that question. So generally, how long are payments delayed by? I know all of us serve different communities and just want to make sure we get.
It would be hard to say exactly on average, but I mean, I can say that our, we just finally received all payments for F Y twenty-two in January of this past year.
I'm still waiting.
Okay. And the final question is, what's the most amount of time that you've had a payment delayed by? What's the longest you've had to wait to get paid for the work that you've done, you and your team? Roughly, if you don't have the hard number.
I think roughly with us, it's been like four, four months.
Same, or longer.
I would say same, six, five to six months.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, thank you so much.
And also, yeah, I just want to echo that, you know, it can take weeks to months, but I think it also depends on the system and what it was mentioned before in terms of not being able to, you know, with the batch invoicing and not being able to move to the next month and, you know, having contracts registered and budgets approved, that also holds up the payment process as well, so I just want to reiterate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, thank you so much, Chair. I've also received frantic calls from providers in my districts, and so I want to thank you all for representing here today, an issue that is continuing to face so many, so many of our families in the city of New York. One issue that I heard about from Fordham Bedford Community Services up in my area is about the stipend rate change that came down from the state of New York last year as one example of a technical correction that is needed within accelerator and within the systems that you all use to do your reporting. So the first question is to anyone who can answer, are the, have these reimbursement rate changes, the higher reimbursement, higher hourly rate requirements, have you had issues with that as well? And then secondly, if we can just go down and say, if you're a council, how many providers you know that are in the red? And if you are a provider, are you in the red? Thank you.
So with regard to the first question, you were talking about the state's increase in the market rate?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm not as closely attached with the folks in the home-based community, but I think that I have heard from folks, particularly our colleague and advocacy, the E C on the move, that there have been, a lot of providers are not yet receiving the increase in the market rate.
Thank you.
What's the second question?
Anyone, folks who are in the red, who are in debt because of the lack of payments?
I am definitely in debt. I may end up having to close a brand-new renovated school in my program, in my community if something doesn't change. That's why I'm here today.
We are also in the red as well with our landlord because we cannot make the payments. As the saying goes, you have to borrow from Peter to pay Paul. That's what we've been doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you guys for being here. As we know, it's always a struggle and with all the work that you do, to then have to still come and advocate and then not being paid is always, is always really difficult.
Yeah, that's it.
So I just, I had a quick question. I just wanted to know, has, has, did any of the providers on the panel, did you guys get an email from D O E about batch payments yesterday? Or batch payments in general for F Y twenty, um, twenty-three? If so, could you talk a little bit about it, please?
I can only say that I know that we did receive some notification.
So there was some notification to you guys? And I know that the big topic is also around, is around the payment, but could you talk about some of the other issues you guys are, the providers are facing with the contracting process and things like that? Because I know the payment is obviously the most pressing issue, but there is another host of issues that I'm sure that you guys often face and can't talk about because you're not being paid and so it also gets overshadowed. So I wanted to make sure we created space so you can talk about some of the other issues that folks are facing and challenges.
One of the things I would really like to say about being a provider, with a city as large as New York City and you have several systems or several city organizations overseeing early childhood education, I think the biggest thing I faced was the permitting process with D O H and D O E not being in communication. And as a result of speaking up about very, I guess retaliatory practices, when you speak up about the issues you may face with workers coming to your site or with D O E, it seems as though you are further stalled or disenfranchised because you speak up. And it's nowhere you can go. So this accountability system, it's great that the mayor wants to open something within his office to support early child education, but there was no speak of D O H. If something is not done about the permitting process and the management of how they manage providers like myself, you can't sustain business because if they don't do their job, if they don't follow through, and D O E and D O H do not talk to each other. And so because of that, we oftentimes suffer and experience a lot of issues that can be prevented if it was better communication and better systematic structures to support small providers like myself.
I agree with that also. D O E and D O H needs to have conversations so you're on one accord. And one of, another issue is we cannot enroll kids all times of the year, three K and pre-K. But D O E can, can continuously bring kids in all time of the year. We only have a set time that we can enroll kids. Once that portal is closed, it's closed. So that, that's an issue as well.
Yeah, I would just echo that because we are penalized if we're under-enrolled, but we don't have any control over the process of enrollment. So if a family comes to us and says, we, you know, do you have any space? And we can say, yeah, we do, but we, we don't have direct control over that process.
Just to piggyback off of that, some of the things, and I think that Gregory might have mentioned this in his testimony, with the centralized enrollment, there's little to no funding for programs to do their own outreach and marketing, and I think it presents a huge challenge to fill seats. And also, we hear a lot about the inflexibility in the contracts to be able to serve age groups that meet the needs of the families who are coming seeking care.
Yeah, just, I guess following on that, I think moving away from centralized enrollment to a hybrid would be incredibly beneficial because you have a lot of trust of community-based organizations in the neighborhoods they serve. You have a lot of families who find it easier to engage with a community-based organization than even with the most well-meaning large government agency. The other thing I would add, and on the topic of the D O H and D O E coordination, is the comprehensive background checks performed by Department of Health. Those are also significantly delayed and they're actually much more delayed than the background checks conducted by the pet system at D O E. So we kind of hope that the C B C system can be reformed to move more quickly because there's a lot of times where you have staff who are not fully cleared, they've gone through a level of clearance where there you have to be supervised a hundred percent of the time that they're in a room with children, and it creates a staffing issue throughout the, both our early childhood programs and the youth-serving programs.
I'd like to recognize councilmember Dinowitz, councilmember Angs, Powers, Aviles, Osay, and Hanif. Councilmember Shaker?
Thank you, Chair Joseph. The work you all do is indispensable and essential in this city, and so we're very grateful to hear from you all about the urgent fixes that are needed to the system. I just have two short questions. One is, it's my understanding that in the past, you all have, were able to get a bridge loan that would help to cover rent, utilities, and as I understand it, would be received within ten days, would cover payroll too. But this year, that's no longer an option anymore. Is that correct?
It's because bridge loans are only available for unregistered contracts. So once it's registered, which we do want registered contracts, it's not a sustainable system. But yeah, that, that option did not become, became not an option, I guess, when contracts were registered. I actually don't know if there's a legal reason for that, so that may be something that could be looked into.
Now, that's my question too, is, you know, maybe the case for unregistered contracts, but, you know, why couldn't there be some, you know, accommodations made for the registered ones, given the magnitude of the crisis we're facing now? My other, just a quick question is, seems like increasing the contract advance, so once you, once you have a registered contract, increasing the contract advance would be a very effective way to help with the situation, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. And some other agencies, other city agencies are doing that, are looking into it. So I think that would be something really great. And we're urging them to advance at seventy-five percent. Currently, it's thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five percent.
Yeah. So for F Y twenty-three, the advance would be expended for pretty much everyone since we're more than thirty-five percent.
Exactly. I was going to say, we're probably approaching closer to seventy-five percent than we are at thirty-five percent. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to everybody on the panel. We will now hear from our next panel. We will hear from the administration, Cara Ahmed and Dan Weisberg.
They told me she's not an approved provider. I said, what do you mean? I said, you better work with her, there's a very high profile.
Yes, it was.
And, what, you ready for this?
Yep.
Cara Ahmed and Dan Weisberg, I will now call on each of you individually for a response. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before these committees and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Cara Ahmed?
I do.
Dan Weisberg? Thank you so much. May you begin your testimony.
Good afternoon. We actually had some slides as well. I don't know if they're going to be able to come up. If not, no worries.
Yes, one moment.
Sure.
Just a brief hold for one minute for the slides.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, and members of the Education Committee that are here today. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Dr. Cara Ahmed, and I'm the Deputy Chancellor for Early Childhood Education for New York City Public Schools. I am pleased to be joined here today by First Deputy Chancellor, Dan Weisberg. As a former early childhood educator and principal, this work continues to be personal to me. And it's personal to our chancellor, who rightly proclaims that bold futures begin with bright starts. We are both proud of what we've accomplished in such a short amount of time, and we're confident in the progress that we'll continue to make. We are committed to offering a range of high-quality birth-to-five programs in every neighborhood based on the needs and the preferences of our families. We are grateful to have the capacity to serve over a hundred and forty thousand children, which includes more than ten thousand infants and toddlers. And we are providing three K and pre-K in every district in the city in a variety of settings, including both district elementary schools, standalone pre-K centers, family childcare programs, charter schools, and community-based organizations. I want to publicly thank all of our early childhood educators and our program and school leaders, who have devoted themselves to serving our children and their families. We could not do this work without them. New York City Public Schools has a budget of two-point-two million for our early childhood education portfolio, which represents the largest early childhood education program in the nation, and it includes all programming, serving children from birth to five years old. Approximately four-hundred-and-fifty-six million, or twenty-one percent of our budget, comprises one-time federal stimulus funds. Approximately twenty-five percent of our overall budget includes state funding, primarily for our programming for our four-year-olds, and six percent of our budget is funding from the Childcare Block Development Grant that supports our three K and pre-K extended year and extended day seats, as well as our infant and toddler seats across our portfolio. High-quality early childhood education that meets the needs of our young children is an essential part of our school system, and it's a priority of this administration. We want to continue to build on what's working while addressing any gaps that adversely impact our children and their families. When I came before the Education Committee in October, I outlined the work my team has done and hearing from our programs and our schools on the ground level as we work towards developing a comprehensive vision for a high-quality birth-to-five program built on an inclusive, mixed-delivery model. That optimizes seats to provide high-quality programs aligned with family needs and preferences, guarantees sustainable, equitable, and responsible financial support for programming, develops and fairly compensates the workforce, and ensures a safe, high-quality, early learning across New York City for every child in every zip code. As we plan for the long-term success of early childhood education, we know there have been and continue to be challenges in this work. We are proud that Chancellor Banks announced last year that our commitment to help stabilize the C B O sector was a priority. Our C B O leaders are invaluable partners in this work, a workforce comprised primarily of women, and in particular, women of color. So many of our C B O partners are cornerstones of their community, and it is important to work in partnership to ensure we're serving their neighborhoods as best as we possibly can. A great example of this is the ongoing work our team has been doing to support our partners with the Shirley Chisholm Daycare Center in central Brooklyn. In collaboration and genuine partnership with the leadership of this program, as well as elected officials in the community, our team has provided targeted supports and coaching on an ongoing basis that's helped to facilitate a successful program, delivering high-quality early childhood education for children and supportive services for families. Our office continues to work in collaboration with this program, ensuring critical structures are in place, such as adequate and proper staffing, sound fiscal operations, developmentally appropriate teaching and learning systems, and health and safety practices. This is the type of work that we are committed to practicing across the sector, to support our programs and our schools, and ensure the focus remains on our children receiving high-quality services. More broadly, in early November, our chancellor announced a number of steps to support the C B O sector. I'd like to point your attention to slide one, if you don't mind turning. Thank you. And at that time, we knew that we were faced with a very large issue. Over four thousand invoices that had not yet been submitted for the previous fiscal year, predating our administration. I'd like to point your attention to Slide 1, if you don't mind turning. Thank you. And at that time, we knew that we were faced with a very large issue, over 4,000 invoices that had not yet been submitted for the previous fiscal year, predating our administration. We knew that there was a sector that had been severely destabilized prior to the pandemic, that we needed to make sure that we were addressing and supporting and helping to really stabilize and bring back sustainability and stability. And so our chancellor announced at that time a number of steps to help support the CBO sector, including a rapid-response team to ensure every provider with unsubmitted invoices got the one-to-one help that they needed, a commitment to pay invoices in a timely manner, and a new stabilization fund to pay providers 75% of their FY22 contract, regardless of their expenses and regardless of their enrollment. We are very pleased we were able to meet all of these commitments in just 12 weeks. The Rapid Response Unit has made thousands of calls, sent emails, held meetings with providers virtually and in person, walking them through the processes to get their invoices submitted, resolved, and paid. We've changed our invoicing processing to speed payment up, to get the stabilization fund up and running. If you can go to the next slide, that'd be great. Since the chancellor's announcement of our added support to stabilize the sector just these 12 weeks ago, I'm proud to report that we've been able to assist our CBO partners in submitting over 3,800 back invoices from the previous fiscal year, resulting in over $122 million in payments in just that short amount of time, and totaling more than $1 billion over the course of fiscal year '22. We've also delivered on the city's commitment to stand up stabilization fund grants, and have already identified dozens of eligible vendors who have received in total millions of dollars in stabilization payments. If you can go to the next slide, that'd be great. Numbers that will continue growing in the coming weeks. And so as back invoices are submitted and all invoices are submitted for FY22, if payments do not equal 75% of the contract for a provider for fiscal year '22, they then become eligible for the stabilization grant, which many providers have already received tens to millions of dollars. In order to sustain this crucial work, we must ensure its financial sustainability. The system that we inherited unfortunately has been plagued by some deep flaws in the system that still hinder our progress. This includes a grave problem in our system of oversaturation, too many similar seats in one geographical area while not meeting the demand in other communities. That leads to thousands of empty seats in some communities and long wait lists in others. Not only is this not the best use of our resources, but the imbalance creates unhealthy competition between and among our early childhood programs and schools, and ultimately resulting in under-enrollment across the system. That has destabilized the sector, especially our community-based organizations that our city has relied on for years, and again, are led mainly by women and women of color. In addition, we are dealing with inequitable pay rates per child across settings, inadequate processes within DOE for supporting our CBO partners, and a 3K expansion that was funded through stimulus dollars that now faces a fiscal cliff. I want to be clear, we are not reducing current funding to 3K. We currently have a lot of seats and enough seats for every three-year-old who needs one, but we are pushing this work forward by building a birth-to-five program that will include 3K and pre-K, and it will be based on the needs and preferences of families and their communities, though we acknowledge the big challenge of determining how we will fund it, considering the impending fiscal cliff. But we will solve this problem in collaboration with you, because our children's success and their educational journey absolutely depends on it. We arrived at this place with city, state, and federal help, and we will continue to need city, state, and federal help to build on it. But we have to change our landscape by creating a sustainable and responsible financial plan that can fund our long-term commitments to children and guarantee stability for their families. Our administration also believes that every child from every zip code must have access to high-quality early childhood experience, and that includes our children with disabilities. Last December, we announced that our early childhood education system would include a strategic and an intentional focus on serving young children living with disabilities and their families, and we thank Chair Joseph for standing with us at that time. New York City Public Schools is addressing these historic inequities by not only expanding the number of seats available, but also ensuring that existing seats can remain in place, giving our families and providers stability. We are ensuring pay parity to those providers and access to the same length of the school day that a child would receive in any of our early childhood classrooms, and many of these newly expanded special education preschool seats exist in under-resourced communities. Families of students with disabilities need reliable childcare, and we are committed to making that a reality in New York City. We thank Chair Joseph and the council for the immense leadership on this issue. I will now turn to the proposed legislation from Councilmember Menon. We have not yet had an opportunity to fully examine the proposed legislation, but we do look forward to working with the council, so thank you. While there has been incredible progress made, let me be very clear, this is certainly just the beginning. High-quality early childhood education that meets the needs of our young children is an essential part of our school system and a priority of this administration, and our mission isn't close to being accomplished. We have a lot of work ahead of us, and we aim to continue on this path in service to children and to their families across New York City. I thank you all for your time, and I look forward to answering any questions that the committee may have.
And Chair, Chair Joseph, I could beg your indulgence. We just have a couple more slides. Is it okay if I just take you through that very briefly?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. So if you would, flip to the next slide. We just want to give you a little bit more data before we answer questions. So what about FY23? Deputy Chancellor Ahmed went through the story for FY22. For FY23, we anticipate paying out about $1.2 billion to early childhood providers. We did issue advances at the beginning of the year totaling about $468 million. That's about 35%. Many agencies pay about 25%. We're pleased that we're able to do a little better than that. We have received about 2,700 invoices thus far. We've paid 2,200 of those, totaling about $162 million. Now, the average wait time for paying an invoice for FY23 is about 17 and 1/2 business days. I'm gonna drop out of character for a second. Until a year-plus ago, I myself was the head of a nonprofit, and I know very much what it's like to toss and turn, worrying about whether you can make payroll, waiting for government to pay your bills. If I was dealing with an agency as a nonprofit head that was paying invoices in 17 and 1/2 business days, I am telling you, councilmembers, I would have jumped for joy. That's not to say that everything is perfect. It is not. You absolutely can find providers who are waiting longer. We have to do better, but what this represents is real improvement. So on that point about us not being perfect, we do have 25 invoices for FY23 pending that have been pending over 30 days, and that's a problem. That's not good. We're working to resolve those right now as we speak. We want that number to be zero, but that represents less than 1% of the invoices we receive, and again, what that represents is improvement. And then just on the next slide. This is the continuing challenge. So what does this grab? This is the rate month-by-month at which we are receiving invoices in FY23. We pay out the advances at the beginning of the year, which is great, about 35%. As a result of that, we don't get many invoices in, in August and September. That's a problem. We have to help the providers. It's not the providers' fault. This is our fault. We have to figure out a system where we are getting those invoices early in the year, because you can see what happens. As that advance dissipates, the number of invoices in January has spiked up, which is good, because we're getting them paid more quickly, but wouldn't it be better for those providers if they didn't have to hustle and rush and stress, and they were getting in their invoices, which we are really trying to encourage them to do, by the fifth of every month, and then they're getting paid by the end of the month? That's the cadence we want. So you don't have to submit multiple invoices, you don't have to go back and forth, you get into a cadence. We don't yet have the infrastructure to support that. And finally, from my first tour of duty at the New York City Public Schools, there was a story that went around, probably apocryphal, about a middle-school gym with a gym floor that had been replaced several times, three, four, or five times over the course of five years, and nobody had thought to look at the roof, which was leaking, which was causing that floor to buckle and need to be replaced. The issue, yes, we have issues on payment, no question about it. We've got to do better. We have to be easier and more customer-friendly. I think we're getting better, but we still have a ways to go. But the fundamental problem, the fundamental problem, if you're a provider, is that you have taken a lease for four classrooms because the DOE years passed gave you a contract for four 3K classrooms, and you can only fill two of them. And so you're only getting paid, because our revenue comes in by student? You are getting paid by student. That makes it very hard to pay the rent. We have to, we have to do something about the fact that we have so many, approaching 40,000, empty seats in 3K and pre-K. We want to work with all of you on outreach. I'm sure we can do better on outreach, but we're also gonna have to continue the process, as Dr. Ahmed talking about, of making sure that we are responding to the community need. If they need infant-toddler seats, let's make sure those providers can provide infant-toddler seats. They need 3K, pre-K, let's make sure they have the right number, so the providers are never in this situation where they've been contracted for seats we may have opened up, a provider right down the street, or one of our schools right down the street, and there's just not enough kids in that particular, within a four-block ratio there, and so they can't fill the seats, and that creates the financial strain. That's the leaky roof. The leaky roof is the misallocation of seats. We have to deal with the buckling floor, but please, help us to fix that leaky roof. Thank you, Chair, very much.
Thank you, Deputy Chancellor. All right, so let's talk about funding. What was the budgeted total amount for childcare, 3K, UPK services, and FY22?
I'm sorry, Chair Joseph, my mic was off. For 3K and pre-K?
3K, UPK services, and FY22. What was the total amount budgeted?
We brought FY22 with us. Sorry, we have FY23 numbers with us, so we'd have to...
No, FY22?
I think so, yeah.
It was approximately $2.2 billion overall. Chair, sorry, we'll get you the exact...
We can get the exact number, though, for you, for FY22.
Thank you. What's some supported UPK and 3K in school settings? How much of that amount supported UPK and 3K in school settings?
We have this information.
Don't think we have that number, Chair. Apologize, we'll get that for you.
Just need the nitty-gritty for this. So what amount supported contracted-for-family daycares and center-based care for infant, toddlers, 3K, and UPK?
For FY22, we'd have to get back to you on those details.
Okay, so, okay, no problem. So how much childcare and development block grant funding did New York City receive from New York State in FY22 and FY23, and how much of it has been spent so far?
For the CCDBG funding, we've had about $125 million in allocation. There are claiming periods, so that money is filtered from the federal government to the state to ACS, not directly to DOE, and then we're reimbursed through ACS. So there's a claiming period that's happening going into March, and so those numbers will get calculated and totaled.
And you'll send that over as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you. As of the end of September 2022, early childhood providers were owed $460 million by DOE for work performed during FY22. But according to an audit from Sea Change Capital Partners, how much is currently owed to early child providers for work performed during FY22?
I can answer that, sure. So as we shared, you know, we've paid already over $122 million in the back invoices for FY22. We do suspect that there may be more invoices that need to be submitted, and we have a rapid-response team that's still in effect. We still have our analysts, who are still in place and still working directly with providers, so if they do have an invoice from FY22, they please, we ask that you still submit it, and we will pay it. We cannot tell you what that total will be, only because invoices will vary. Not every invoice results in a payment. For some providers, it is gonna be based on their enrollment and their expenses, and so we would not know that until we actually see the invoice.
Do you know how many outstanding invoices remain for the FY22 contracts?
We have approximates, but we couldn't tell you. We know that there are about 84 vendors, which is a very small amount, considering the universe, that still have some unsubmitted invoices. So we're still working with those 84 vendors. We will continue to work with those 84. That work doesn't stop. You know, while we're working on two fiscal years concurrently, that work will continue.
So far, how many of the providers have been fully paid, and how many have partially been paid?
So there have been, for FY22, we had approximately almost 797, I think, active vendors, and about 89% of those, 713, have closed out FY22.
Thank you. Earlier, you heard about the Rapid Response Team. Has the Rapid Response Team conducted all of the promised support sessions, weekly meetings, site visit for all providers? If not, how many providers have not yet received the support?
The Rapid Response Team has been in contact since early November with every single vendor that had an unsubmitted invoice, whether they had 12 unsubmitted invoices or one unsubmitted invoice. Actively calling on a daily and weekly basis, offering to set up in-person or virtual meetings, walking folks through the process over the phone, any support that was needed, we are there to offer, and that work continues. That doesn't end.
Correct, but earlier in Joyce's testimony, she said she has never heard from the Rapid Response Team.
That's unfortunate. I myself have been in contact with Ms. McClamie often, and so has our team. We've been in direct contact, and I know that the Rapid Response Team has been in contact with her directly to support with her FY22 invoices to be submitted, and I know that I've also been in personal contact with Ms. McClamie.
And what about the emails? She also said that she emails, and it takes forever for someone to respond.
You know, I certainly can speak to Ms. McClamie directly and look into that. I just know that we've had constant and consistent communication with her. We're happy to partner with her. Any support that she needs to get in her remaining invoices, I think for FY22, we may be all set, and for FY23, any support that we can offer, we will continue to do so.
So Ms. McClamie, you hear that? On the record, they will support you. Has DOE been able to fully meet the goal of processing invoices within the 30 days? That was the goal.
Yes, Chair.
So Ms. McClamie, what is the average length of time between a provider submitting an invoice and receiving funds from that invoice into their account?
About 17 and 1/2 days, business days, Chair.
17, okay, all right. Despite deployment of a Rapid Response Team and other changes of non-payment, according to last month at the New York State Hearing Centers, we're still having difficulty submitting invoices. Unregistered contracts have missed payroll or vendor payments due to delays, and we heard that across the panel today with the delays in payment. Do you have a timeline as to when is the outstanding payments for FY22 will be completed and FY23?
For FY22, as invoices come in, we continue to pay them, and so as we've shared, you know, the majority, close to 3,800 or over 3,800, I think even as of today, have already been received and paid. So as they come in, we will continue that review and process them, and the same for FY23.
FY23, some of the providers are saying, eight months into the school year, some of them have not been paid. How do we remedy that? So you stabilize, see, we use the key word stabilize in the sector, and that's one way to stabilize the sector, is making sure that vendors and providers have money in their hands to continue these services.
Absolutely, I couldn't agree more. If there's any provider that feels they have not been paid for eight months, I need them to reach out to me directly. So that, and I've shared that with you, Chair Joseph, please, send me any provider that feels they haven't been reached out to in eight months, haven't been paid. We will absolutely look into it, but I think as First Deputy Chancellor has shared, the payment process has only improved over time, and we've been able to turn around payments in less than two weeks, sometimes in the same day and/or the same week.
I would say, Chair, yes, please let us know about anybody who's waited more than 30 days to get an invoice paid. Seriously, anybody. We don't care what the situation is. Text me anytime, day or night, or Dr. Ahmed. If somebody hasn't been paid for FY23 fiscal year as yet, I'm gonna say that either means there's an issue in them being able to submit invoices, which is not their fault. We have to figure out how to help them to do that, and they should have gotten an advance of about 35% of their contract. If they didn't get that, again, there's a problem. If they didn't get that, again, there's a problem we want to hear about right away so that we can address that.
Earlier, you stated about, you have about 466 invoices to be paid. What is the timeline and when can the vendors expect the payments?
This is for FY23?
Correct.
Yes. For FY23, we're looking at a little over 400 that have been received less than thirty days ago. So some of them are just even from today, some are from this week, some are from last week. So those will be reviewed and processed and sometimes there's a back and forth exchange with the provider if it needs to be, the invoice needs to be corrected or updated or things added to it. But those will be processed and it will be less than thirty days.
And we could get a commitment on the record for a fast turnaround time?
Absolutely.
We've, we heard earlier about this contracting, this cumbersome contracting system to expedite payments. Walk me through the timeline in reforming it. What does it look like for providers? Because the system, as we already know, you inherited, but now guess what? It's yours. So you have to fix it. So what is the timeline on getting that fixed so we're not here again, having the same conversation again?
Do you want to talk about contracting? I can talk about contracting, sure.
Sure, why don't you start?
I mean, there is a process and I don't think we would disagree. It can often be a very cumbersome process for any small business owner to navigate, right? It's complicated and it's full of steps. And it's also not just full of steps and one of the panelists, I think, said this, is that it's not just full of steps for the DOE, right? Because there's, there's other city agencies in which this process goes through. So I know that to your point, yes, we did inherit this system and I know that we work very closely with our other teams and divisions within the DOE to support the contracting process because it does go through many different layers and to really, really improve and strengthen upon the pieces that we can absolutely control, which is staying in close contact with our providers every step of the way of this contracting process. Sometimes we might not even have a better answer on their status if it's left the DOE, but the fact that we can stay in close communication to keep giving them any update that we can, I find is a reassurance for folks and actually supportive and helpful in moving the process forward. Within our own internal controls, any of the pieces that need to happen are the things that we're trying to move as quickly and as efficiently on as possible. There are pieces that have to come from the provider, a submitted budget, things that have to be approved before they can even move or shift from one office to the next. So the best way that we can break that down are through trainings and overviews for anyone who's received a new award, which happened last spring, into the summer. Again, that constant communication, say, here's where you are in this step, here is the next step. You are still within the DOE, it's now out of the DOE's hands, it's gone to PEP, it's gone to the Controller's Office, whatever those pieces are, those are the pieces that we're trying to make sure that we are tightening up as much as we can on our end, but also staying in close communication with providers so that they're fully empowered through that process.
And just some numbers, Chair. The good news is that we have about fifteen hundred and thirty contracts for FY23, the providers. To avoid confusion, some providers have multiple contracts. So this doesn't mean there's fifteen hundred providers, but fifteen hundred and thirty contracts, all but thirty-four have been registered. So we want those thirty-four to be registered for sure. Again, this is, this is a cumbersome process, but it's improving.
Yes, it is improving, but there's also understaffing. How does that? There's a lot of word that there's not enough staffing in the office to support this kind of work and that needs a lot of hands on deck. How is that? How does that? How do you plan on staffing the office to make sure the needs of the providers are being met?
So I would, I would like to answer that question and also just to add to Dan's, the First Deputy Chancellor's comments on the unregistered piece, some of those contracts too speak to amendments. And so I just want to be clear that they're not full provider contracts. So Councilmember Gutierrez, I thank her for raising up what I believe she was referring to as the family childcare market rate increases, which go through an amendment process. That would be an example of an amendment, but not necessarily a contract. So providers can continue to be paid, they go through the same budget process, et cetera, as an amendment is occurring, right? Or if additional seats were added to someone's contract or there was a change in seats, those are all the amendment pieces. But Chair Joseph, to your question around staffing, again, we're talking about multiple divisions that are handling contracts within the DOE. So on the early childhood end, you know, we've had sufficient staffing at the central level and specifically on the fiscal end, right? We've had a group of folks that have been here for a number of years that remain intact and dedicated and committed. They are incredible human beings, I will say. They work tirelessly, day and night, and they too, knowing the system that's been in place, have led really and lent really incredible and valuable feedback of ways that it can be improved because they've lived through it and they've seen it from its inception. And so they've been incredibly supportive. We also have a number of staff members in our Division of Contract and Purchasing that are working extremely hard at processing contracts and improving those systems. And I would agree and certainly First Deputy Chancellor could, to jump in here, but that we are sufficiently staffed, always room to keep improving the systems around it. I don't know if you'd want to add anything else?
Just as we're looking at, I think, Chair, you mentioned in the past, you know, part of this is it is too labor intensive. Most of the labor in this case is in our procurement unit, central procurement. It's too labor intensive. We need to get into, you know, 2023 here and improve our technology systems. That is something we are actively looking at to see how we can bring in technology systems, going to make the whole thing less labor intensive and speed it up for our, for our vendors.
Absolutely. I'm going to pass the question on, next set of questions to my colleague, Majority Leader Powers.
Thank you. Nice to see you. Thanks for the testimony, thanks for being here and thank you to our Chair for doing a hearing on the topic I know we are all very interested in and concerned with. I want to just talk a little bit district specific and east side specific and Councilman Renan's here as well, my neighboring colleague on the Upper East Side. We have been talking for a very long time on pre K and three program, three K programs to let, to make sure we're filling in the gaps and addressing the need. And I can tell you, if a very high rent area, having these programs are a magnet for families, young families to want to stay in the city and continue to be here in our neighborhood and community. There are noticeable gaps that I've seen in the past when it comes to three K programs being rolled out in our districts. I understand that in the, under the last administration, it was not the starting point of where three K was and I understand and certainly intend that. So I have a couple of questions. One is, are there any other plans or intentions at this point as you're changing and reconfiguring this program and obviously talking about this program and this year's budget? Any plans to address places where there might be gaps? Two is, and I'm not, I'm not advocating necessarily take away from where there's a need in other communities, but certainly where there is an unfilled slots in funding to be able to distribute those places. And three is, I think the council has received some of it, but can you share any data by district, per council district about, like, so Council District Four, for instance, my district, about how many seats there are and applications need, things like that? And then I guess the last question is, because then I'll just let you guys go, is it feels to me like in a lot of the unfilled areas and some of the slots we're talking about are really, really good slots or all day, they are fills of a real need for parents here in the city and those, some of those seem to be going unfilled and that surprise, shocks me. So it does ask me the question of whether we are doing enough to reach those parents and this is not all, everyone this administration's issue, this is a program's been, you know, going through a lot over the last few years. But I do have a concern about how we are reaching folks to make sure. And the reason I ask my question about gaps is I also get concerned the parents and I hear from them are seeing programs out there, but they're just too far away. It's out, it's too far away from their house, so it does not make sense for them to make, do the entire commute on their way to work and works change, obviously. But, so a lot of questions, want to know about District Four, want to know about how we might shift and, you know, unused each other places and want to, yeah, get a better handle on what we're doing right now to fill in gaps.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. Thank you, Mr. Leader, appreciate that. Hopefully we took good notes. Dr. Ahmed will come in with some of the data, which we do have. On the issue of, are we doing enough to make sure families are aware? Let me start with the good news. The good news is last year, pre K, sorry, three K applications were up by about twenty percent. So that's good. Still many, many empty seats on the order of sixteen thousand empty seats in three K, but it's good that outreach is bearing fruit.
How many applications total?
We'll, we'll pull that for you. Karen may have that even while I'm speaking. And, you know, we have opened up the application process even for 2023 and again, three K demand at year over year is up by another two thousand or so, just in a short period of time that the application portal's been open. So that's, that's the good news. The bad news, the challenging news is, yeah, we don't want any of these seats to be empty and so we've got to make sure we do everything we can to get the information about free quality, in some cases extended day, extended year seats are available to you, to every family. So we definitely want to work with you about how to get that word out in a more effective way and an even broader way. The data, I believe we've shared some data, we'll make sure it's the right data with Chair Joseph and happy to share it with, with any member who wants, is looking for data in your particular district. And generally, Dr. Ahmed and her team have begun this process. We're not waiting, we are doing a needs assessment to try to really get a fix on what the demand is, in particular micro neighborhoods, because you say, we don't, we don't want to walk our three-year-olds, you know, twenty blocks. That's not good. So it's really a very small area that we're looking at, we're doing that, but we're not waiting for that. So Dr. Ahmed will give you the particulars, but we have already begun changing the configuration because very often this isn't about taking seats away from one area, give them to another. It's about making sure the configuration in that area meets the demand, right? So infant toddler as opposed to, you know, pre K, for example, in a particular area. But Chair, if it's okay, Dr. Ahmed will give a little bit, a little bit of data in that.
And I'd also like to answer your question about the number of applications in 2022. It's almost forty thousand for three K, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty. That's up from 2021 in which it was thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eight.
Was it number forty?
I'm sorry?
Well, the number of applications, can you just repeat the number?
Thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty.
Thirty-nine. And how many seats are there?
There are currently fifty-five thousand seats, yeah. And about sixteen thousand of those are unfilled, yeah. You know, we heard a lot, and thank you, First Deputy Chancellor Weisberg, we heard a lot from the panelists before us around this misallocation. I think we've been saying this now for several months, almost for a year, around where we know that there's an absolute need for change and not just about shifting to where we saw areas of unmet need, but also ensuring that we are eliciting and understanding what the voices of the community. We have a variety of settings. As I shared previously in my testimony, we are prioritizing a vision of early childhood that's built on a mixed model delivery system. So that means that we want to make sure that we're understanding from families where they want their children to be, whether that be a center-based program, a family childcare program, a district school, a standalone pre K center or a charter school. Their choice and their decision becomes really, really important. So that was one point that I wanted to make sure that I got in there. But I also, I know we're going to share some data on some places where we've made some changes already and I think that's really important, including on the Upper East Side, we're going into this school year alone, we were able to identify unfilled pre K seats leaning into the voice of our program leaders from CBOs and from our school principals and convert those to three K seats. And that's just one of several examples of what the work has been since last spring. So that work has not stopped. We are engaged in an external needs analysis in this moment and when those results are in, in the next few months, we are absolutely committed in sharing those with Chair Joseph and having a briefing with you to discuss those further because those will help us really make some determinations on a large scale to do exactly what we, I think we're all agreeing to, which is ensuring that we are addressing unmet need and reducing oversaturation and shifting resources where they're needed the most. In Staten Island alone going into this year, we were able to shift a number of unfilled pre K and three K seats from one side of the island to the other side of the island just to ensure that the needs of families are actually being met. In our family childcare providers, we had over five hundred unused three K seats, unused. And so we converted those to infant toddler seats, extended day and extended year, right? As we know, for working families, our student parents that are attending school while parenting, that, that doesn't stop on June 30th and it doesn't stop at 2:20 on any given day, right? And so to the point that I heard many make already, absolutely, looking for ways to make sure that our extended day, extended year seats are available and accessible for families. Right now, that's one of our, our fill rates, that's probably at the highest of being unfilled is our extended day and extended year, which also says to us again, there's a misallocation of where those seats are actually located. To the point of enrollment, I just want to make a point here, I know I heard a lot from the panelists around the centralized enrollment. For infants and toddlers, enrollment is not centralized or handled directly through the Department of Education. That happens at individual programs. And so that is completely decentralized and that is also a place where we're seeing that there's a huge gap of unfilled seats and yet we know for sure, New Yorkers can and need infant toddler care. So it is our obligation, it's our responsibility and this is our priority of really looking at where those seats are and where they actually need to be so that we're serving the greatest amount of New Yorkers as possible.
Thank you. I'll let you, my time is up. I just would love to have a follow-up meeting with the team of the DOE at some point and colleagues who represent the east side to talk about where the gaps are and where we can fill those in. So appreciate it, thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Powers. Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you very much. Picking up on earlier, I agree with you about the decentralization of infant and toddler, but the group earlier, Gregory and everybody else, was asking for across-the-board decentralization. That's question number one, why we can't do it. Question number two, I was around forever and I saw everybody had a T-shirt on saying pre K, K, et cetera, three K, it was a de Blasio thing. You got to do that. That's the only way. Nobody reads a newspaper in the city anymore, nobody watches television anymore, they're on the streets, they need to see visually this information. So you have to do that kind of outreach. I have not heard a peep and I know only Manhattan perhaps, but I know what's going on in the streets. You don't have any publicity about these programs, you just don't. So two questions, what about Passport? That's number one. Two, can we decentralize? Number two, and then also can you do the press? And then I just also want to mention, the address Deputy Chancellor is 1972 Broadway, twenty-three million dollars. I want to get an answer on that. I assume you have one. It's opening in September. We'd like to know what's going on. And then the HOCAL money, what are you using the HOCAL money for?
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. I'm going to take a few of these and Dan, please feel free to jump in. Passport, let me start there. Passport is something that I heard from providers too. I've been listening to providers since the onset of the beginning of my role here as Deputy Chancellor and Passport has come up as a question. We've looked into it, our operations team, among our leadership group has looked into it and what we understand is that generally it is not being used for invoicing at this time or for a payment system across the city. It seems that there might be a pilot project that is in place, but that it is not an invoicing system. It is being used more widely and now more recently in the DOE for contracting and procurement, but not necessarily for payment. If that changes, that's certainly something we'll explore as we are also exploring other systems too. You know, this is something that I've shared with Chair Joseph and with others here on the committee.
I know, but it would be easier not, I call it on the shelf, not a custom. Don't do custom.
We, we agree and I think that's the existing system.
I've been doing this for forty years. Don't do custom.
That's the existing system.
But I think it makes sense to use Passport because everybody else is using Passport and don't do something that DOE is going to be unique and then it doesn't work. I'm for Passport.
If Passport becomes available as something that is a payment system, that is certainly something that we can be looking at.
My understanding that it is, but all right, go ahead. That's number one, I'm going to check on that. Go ahead.
Number two?
It's just, can we not have decentralization, at least a hybrid system? The mayor's finally learning how to spell hybrid now? That's a good thing. Can we have a hybrid system for the decentralization of enrollment?
So the Office of Student Enrollment has a system that's set up to really foster family choice. And so the, the application process for three K and pre K, it is allowing families to make over eleven choices of where they would like their child to enroll, places that are mutually convenient to their home and to their, to their place of work and what is supportive for them in the type of setting that they'd like their child to be enrolled in. And so that process has been filtered through the application process of DOE so that we can support families in making their choice.
I'm not disagreeing with you except you heard twelve, ten people say it's not working. So... So if you want people to show up, I think they go locally, they, the hell with the system a DOE is doing, you need to have something that is more decentralized. Please, can you consider it? I know you hate to change, but consider it. It's not working what you're doing, they're not signing up.
You want to talk a little bit more about it?
Because I do get frustrated.
I'm going to talk about more. I will, I'm going to pass it on to-
I go with Gregory Bender.
Okay, I'm going to pass it on to our First Deputy Chancellor in a moment, who, who leads the work with Office of Student Enrollment.
Along with Gregory.
But I will say this, that families absolutely have the right to walk into a provider, into a school, and say this is somewhere that they would like to enroll, and the provider and the program have an absolute opportunity, in any of our family welcome centers across the city, to support with enrollment there. The application process is one place, but 3K, pre-K infants and toddlers, like any of our school system, it's rolling. So right now, at any moment, and this happens already on a daily basis, parents, families, they choose, and they choose, and they walk into a program or a school, and they ask to be enrolled there, and they have every opportunity to do that.
But that, that's not what we said earlier, just so you know.
But that, that is, I just want to make sure we're informing families of the, the proper process, that is absolutely accurate. They can do that, and they should do that, because they have the right to choose where they want their child to attend.
Something's disconnected. Go ahead.
So, the, the, there are many providers that when a family walks in and says, I want to enroll my kid here, they have a tablet, and they walk the parent through the, the portal and have them, you know, list that particular site as the place they want to go, and then, then they get set up there. What we certainly can do, you know, we want, a lot of parents, of course, aren't just looking at one, they're moving into a neighborhood, they don't know what's there, they want to, you know, maybe sign up for five or six. We want to facilitate that, so they don't have to go and visit physically and put in a paper application. But I think, Councilmember, it's, look, we want to do anything we can to improve enrollment. What we should look at, and we will look at, is, is there something we can do to facilitate the walk-ins to the CBOs to get them into the system quickly?
I'm sure there's some glitch.
So we'll look at, we will absolutely look at that.
All right. Then the HOCAL money, 1972 Broadway, those are the other two questions.
I just want to clarify, when we're talking about the money from the governor, is that the money that's been given to the city?
Yes.
Okay. So, th- those are funds that I know that our city partners are looking at, to determine how they'll best be used and, and to support the childcare.
Extended day is, of course, something that people-
CCDBG funding, absolutely. And really determining how that will best be used in the entire childcare system, which is more than just DOE contract.
No, I understand. Well, it's such an easy policy that you want, you want extended day everywhere, you want infant and toddler to be full, you want every seat to be full, but it's not. So then the question is, what kind of publicity are you doing? Because you're not doing enough, you know that, we all know that. And what else, you know, all these things that were suggested earlier need to be taken into consideration.
Totally agree. Just to point out, I want to set some reasonable expectations, we do have a marketing budget, we would love, and I'm serious about this, we'll, we would love to partner with the council. T-shirts, buses, not newspapers, we're not going to put any ads in newspapers.
No, forget the newspapers, nobody reads them.
We agree with you, social media. But just to, to set expectations, as Dr. Ahmed said, we received 40,000 applications, which is up, which is great.
Yeah, but you got 16,000 vacancies.
But we got 16,000 vacancies, back when you did see a lot of T-shirts and bus stops and so forth, there were a lot of thousands and thousands of empty seats then too. Just to be, just to be clear about that. 1972 Broadway, I am looking into that, as you said, Councilmember, as usual.
389 FCA, right here.
Yes, thank you, you're many steps ahead of me, that, that is one of our projects. We don't yet have an opening date, but we would love to sit down with you and get your, your input on that, on that project.
I'd be glad to give it to you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. And I do stress that enough, when 3K first came out, you were at street fairs, you were tabling at every event, churches, homeless shelters, hospitals, you were everywhere. And we haven't, we don't, we don't see you anymore. So we're asking for that same energy to come back in recruiting parents, because the need is there, there are neighborhoods that have none, there are neighborhoods with long waiting lists, and I talk to the providers and the parents, I'm always in the street talking to them. So I know the need is out there, so you just have to do your due diligence to make sure the word is getting out.
Yes, Chair, we'd love to work with you on that, and, and we will be investing in further outreach, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Dinowitz.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I, you know, I first want to recognize that there has been work done, I think we had a hearing, Chair Joseph had a hearing on this in October of last year, and there were issues with invoices, not being able to submit invoices to the last one was submitted, and that, you know, the bulk invoicing is something that a lot of my directors have said has been very helpful. And I, I also, you know, on a personal note, want to thank you for the announcement for the extra special education seats for our children. It's so incredibly critical to, to them and to their families, who, you know, are very often facing the most challenges in, in our city. I ju, I, I have a few questions about, not the invoicing, but the budgets. You know, the schools have to, the CBOs specifically have to submit budgets beforehand, and they have to be approved. If you have the numbers, that's great, if you don't have them, I'd, I'd love to have these numbers. So on average, how many days does it take to approve a CBO's budget?
That varies, it could be turned, it can be turned around, honestly, within a week, but there is typically exchanges back and forth. So let me give you a few scenarios.
So, I, it's a time thing, it's not a you thing, you're great, it's a time thing. So if you have the number, because in my community, it's months, and this was the same way it was in October, where, you know, I have, you know, the CBOs are submitting in July, August, and still they're not, they're not approved for this school year, right? We're talking with the school year end, their budget has not been approved. I do want to talk about that process, about the rejection process. Do you have the number of how many times budgets are rejected before they are approved?
We can get back to you on the exact number of times, again, it varies from budget to budget.
Okay, do you, right, well, that's what the average would help us determine, right? I'm sure some are approved right away, but, but the average would certainly, would tell us something. How long is a budget allowed to, do you have an internal measurement for how long a budget is allowed to sit pending before it is either rejected or approved?
Budgets are reviewed fairly quickly after they're received, and so that is within a week of receiving it, it should absolutely be reviewed, and then a conversation happens with the provider, whether it's rejected, whether there's an update that needs to be made, whether something is not connected to their actual contract, which is oftentimes the case. So all of those things are taken into consideration. I, it's just unfortunately, one size doesn't fit all, especially when it comes to budgets, but I can absolutely get back to you on any of the average times of rejections, turnarounds, et cetera, how many are still outstanding.
Yeah, I think those numbers help.
And if you have specific cases from your district.
I sure do.
You should reach out directly, and feel free to reach out to myself, to Mark Trager, and we can support with looking into what the particulars are.
So I actually love what you said about, you know, improving systems, Dr. Ahmed, you said improving systems, because I think that's the point. I mean, we come to these hearings, and you say, give us the name of the school, and it's great that you can respond to those individual needs, the DOE in general has responded to my individual needs, but I'm interested in making better systems. And the system right now, I, I'm going to give you the, the example, and you'll tell me if this sounds accurate, because this is the way it is for my providers, they submit a budget, and then they have to go online every day and just check to see whether it was rejected or approved, they themselves have to check. And then when they see it's rejected or approved, they themselves have to reach out to the DOE to find out why it was rejected or approved. Does that sound accurate?
That's not. So a provider submits a budget, and if it is rejected, it is sent back, and there's, it's a technical piece, but it's sent back with comments of exactly what the issues are, what needs to be corrected, and then there's an exchange and a conversation between them and their analyst, whatever that may be, here's how I can help, here's how I can support.
So there's, there's a disconnect, because I have providers telling me that they are not getting an email, they're not getting a phone call, that they are having themselves to check every single day. Now, it may not be a big deal for some of the bigger providers at bigger community centers, but we have, we, we have pre-K programs that are really just that. In addition to all the funding issues, they're spending their time checking this website every day, they're not getting the outreach. And when they find out that their budget was rejected, they are reaching out to the DOE. And so, if that system that you're saying is in place, great, I am telling you that it's not working, and it's not being done. And the second part of that is, very often, the reason for rejection is because certain documents in the documents tab are not submitted properly. But my providers are telling me that they don't know necessarily what those documents are beforehand, and they're very often resubmitting documents that have already been submitted. And so what is the possibility of you providing a checklist for the, the documents? In addition, I, I know there are some that you say on the list need to be there, but in these other documents tab, there are documents that are requested every year that you can just provide a checklist for, for our providers, that they don't have to go back and forth, they don't have to do this back and forth.
You, I couldn't agree more. The checklist exists, trainings exist, there are on, there, there's webinars, and again, I would argue that big or small customer service needs to be in place, and so if it's-
I'm, I'm sorry, and again, it's a time thing, it's not a you, I have respect for you, but it's, it's, you heard from the, the providers in testimony today that you're not talking, or it doesn't seem like you're talking to Department of Health, because those are some of the documents that you're requiring. I'm hearing that even fingerprinting, that you're not talking to pets, even though they're within your, your agency, that my schools are having to reach out to them to find out information that should just, that you should just be asking for to begin with, or you should have. And there's a lot that is not being communicated within your own agency. That's my time, I would love to talk to you more about this, but it, it is very important that we highlight that your, your own agency is not talking to itself, and there's a lot of communication that you are perhaps being told is happening with the CBOs, but is not happening, and needs to be addressed, so that the budgets can be approved, so we can even get to the invoicing process.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Menon?
Thank you so much, Chair. So there's been a lot of conversation that you've heard from a lot of my colleagues about the importance of outreach, and I know you testified about the importance of outreach, but I am deeply concerned, because my understanding is that the pre-K outreach team was recently disbanded by DOE in the past couple weeks, and that you transferred it to the Office of Student Enrollment. Can you confirm if that's correct?
That's not correct, Councilmember, I'm happy to report. There is a 15 or so-member-strong outreach team that has been in the Office of Student Enrollment for quite a while, certainly from before I took my position. It's not just for pre-K, but there is an outreach team that does all of the activities around meeting families and being at welcome centers and, and doing outreach. Nothing happened within the last week.
So for all the members that were part of the original pre-K outreach team, all of them are still dedicated to outreach?
That I would have to go and look and see who was there in the initial, there were, to be clear, I know I wasn't there, but I know that there was a specific pre-K-for-all outreach effort that happened with marketing and the bus stops and everything during the launch. I think there was a dedicated team that at some point, I think years ago, I can check on it, was, once the launch happened, was folded into the Office of Student-
Okay, because I'm, I'm getting reports, like, as of today, that that team was disbanded, so I think what would be incredibly helpful is if we could understand what kind of outreach is happening, what do the ads look like, what is the outreach, where is the outreach going? Because we've got all of these vacancies, but yet we're not filling the, if we're not doing the proper outreach. So I'm, I'm very concerned about it, and would appreciate if there could be some kind of update on that.
Happy, happy to give you that, that update. Again, I just want to emphasize, we can do better outreach. Applications for 3K are way up. This is not just a situation where all these seats used to be filled when there was better outreach. Seats were built in an oversaturated way. There are too many seats in certain places and not enough in others. We can do all the outreach in a world, if there were too many seats opened up in a small radius, then we're not going to fill them, unless we reconfigure them to meet demand. So we're with you on outreach, but don't think that we're going to go from a situation where we have 40,000 total applications for 56,000 seats, and outreach is going to make up that gap. In my opinion, it is not.
I'm just, sorry, thank you. Uh, oh, okay, thank you so much. Yeah, so $4 million was done on marketing last time, can you give us the budget on what's been done on marketing so far and outreach?
Yeah, there's over $3 million right now dedicated for outreach, and again, to First Deputy Chancellor's point, we're not at a launch, a launch stage. This is a program that's already been in existence, and the application rate is up. Families are applying to 3K and pre-K, we saw over 2,200 applicants within the first week of the application process opening up, just this, in this past month, which is a huge increase from last year at the same time.
Okay, so you'll report back to the committee, though, on the outreach. I do have one more question, going back to the payment issue on the providers. So there was very compelling testimony that they're not, that, that providers are not hearing back from DOE, a lot of colleagues discussed it. Could, one suggestion I would have is that if you were to send an email to every single childcare provider that clearly states who their contact person is at DOE, who that person's supervisor is, that is just going to be incredibly helpful, so I would like to get your commitment that you will do that, because I think that would really go a long way to fix that problem.
Thank you, Councilmember. We absolutely could do that, we've done that previously, we've sent things out that state both the analyst and the supervisor. Even recently, again, this week, supervisory's names were provided, and we can continue to do that to support in any way that you think would be helpful, so absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, but I'm, just, just jog my memory of a question earlier. So if you do have folks that are assigned to work with the providers, why are providers stating that they have no one, when they email, no one's answering their calls, no one's returning their emails, and it's taking so long? And as of last, last year, your executive director resigned, was, is that position full? I know that you had about 100 staff that left, that left that division. How is staffing going on in that division?
Thank you, Chair Joseph. To answer your first question, I'm not sure what the disconnect would be in terms of the communication. As I shared, I was personally in contact with some of the providers that actually testified here this, this afternoon, and I know that our team has been in contact with them and their team directly, their fiscal specialists, folks that are dealing with any of their enrollment or attendance. And so, we will continue to do that outreach, we will continue to have those open lines of communication, that is key. That work continues, that work continues to get strengthened, and any provider that, that feels that they cannot reach out to someone in our office, please, I ask again, I've said this publicly before, I'll say it again, reach out to me directly, and I will respond. So we will get to the bottom of why there would be a disconnect, but certainly I do know that our team is actively working and has been. Our team, I think I shared with you earlier in this hearing, that we feel that we have sufficient staff that are here in our program, at our central level in all areas of the work, and specifically in our area of, of finance. There has been very limited to no transition in our finance team for the last several years, and so that finance team is fully intact and still remains assigned to providers and assigned to individual programs.
Thank you. Councilmember Shulman?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair, and I want to, I want to thank the Chair for having this very important hearing. So, a few things. One is, the Chair mentioned that you, you should get back to people and find out what, you know, the ones that were here, what was happening. I'm going to take that a step further and ask that you get back to the Chair or to the committee staff after you contact those individuals, so that we can know what was going on, if there was an error on their end, or, so that we can track it, because very often in these hearings, people say, we're going to touch base with them, and then we never hear anything. So, I'm, so I'm going to ask for that.
We're happy to do that, Councilmember, and happy to also provide information on the, the interactions already happen, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So, Dr. Ahmed, you mentioned in your testimony that you currently have enough seats for every three-year-old who needs one, every, every three-year-old who needs one. What's your definition of who needs one?
That's a great question. So we would say that we do have enough seats for three-year-olds across the city. We would also say that we don't think they're in the right place. And so in terms of needing one, in terms of numbers, what's on paper, there are enough seats. In terms of really meeting the needs of families, which is our goal, we don't think it's sufficient. And that is the work that we have ahead of us. Our administration believes in ensuring that every child that does need a seat has one. That means we've got to get them in the right place so that families have access, and access to the type of seat that they prefer.
Okay, so we need to work very closely on that, because obviously the advocates feel feel a different way, so, and we want to make sure we get this right, because as students, you know, as students only get one chance at a good education, so we want to make sure that it, that it counts. The second thing I want to ask you is, has anything, any thought been given to extending, as, as, as people testified to today, extending the day, the, to year-round seats?
Absolutely, and, and I would just say one more thing, Councilmember, that children don't get a second shot at being two, or three, or four. So you're absolutely right, that this is important and urgent, and so we are acting in that fashion, and so I appreciate your offer of support, because we do want to work with you on solving this huge problem. Extended day, extended year, absolutely. Those are income-eligible seats, that's the, the funding that one of the other Councilmembers asked about, coming from, from the governor, the CCDBG funding, and there's been an expansion to that eligibility, so we're hoping to see that those seats increase in terms of a fill rate, where more families will actually be eligible for them. And so in terms of some of the conversions that we've already made in this past year, it's about converting seats from school day, school year, to extended day and extended year, to support families, working families, student parents. So that work will continue. It's already happened, it's happening, and it will continue to happen.
Thank you. And then, the last line of questioning, you said in your testimony that every child from every zip code must have access to a high-quality early childhood experience, and that includes children with disabilities. I don't know that this is a question for you, per se, but the transportation issue around kids with disabilities is really terrible, there was some news media reports about that this, in the past week, so I just wanted to ask about that, because I have kids in my, where I live, and, and in my community, who regularly have issues with this.
Those are very important issues, and while I don't manage those directly, I certainly can make sure that you're put in touch with folks that can support and help any issues, whether it's a one-off or a larger issue, just in general, please let us know.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Stevens?
Hello. All right, I have a lot of questions, so I'm going to go through them, so y'all might want to take notes. And just, just clearing up some things, I know before you had mentioned that passport was not paid, was more for invoices than that payment, that's not true, DYCD uses it, so I just want to make sure we're clearing things up, because you know I know. And then, even with the outreach efforts, I just wanted to, I'm not going to hammer too much on it, but just according to a chalkboard, a charred beat article, under half of the 240 case, 3K seats in Highbridge and Morisina, which are high-poverty neighborhoods in the Bronx, haven't been filled as of September, and I just want to say, I know you guys are like, oh, you know, you want to work with us, but if you want to work with us, no one's reached out to my office. This is my district, it's a high-poverty area, and so it is not good enough for us to just say, for us to reach out to you. This is an issue and a concern for all of us, and my office is always here and willing to work with you, and so let's really just figure out how to fix it, because I feel like I've heard that in the hearing before in the beginning of the year, still haven't received the call, wanted to point that out. And also, I also want to note that DOE has never been a good recruitment, at recruitment, and so I'm not really sure why providers are not allowed to do the recruitment, so if you have a $3 million budget, that budget should be divvied up amongst the providers, so they can actually do the recruitment themselves, because we're in the community every day. So I think that we should be really reimagining what that looks like, point-blank period. We've had this issue with summarizing, and now with pre-K, DOE, you guys just don't do it well, so like, let's work with the providers, so they can do it. So let, let me get off that hot horse and get to my 300 questions I got here. So, one of the things, when talking with providers, some of the issues around enrollment, around enrollment, isn't just around, like, recruitment and things like that, it's also the requirements around enrollment. So, how are you working with, with, with the providers and families to get some of the requirements to enroll in these programs to be alleviated? Because we know that there's a lot of, like, income requirements and all these different things, how are we looking at these other burdens that we can't even talk about, because they need money, but these other burdens around, like, their enrollment? The other question I have is, what percentages of 3K slots are extended day and extended year? With the needs of the eligibility population in mind, why is there not a large push to offer all programs as extended day and year to, and, and extended day and extended year to better support families? How is DOE working with DOH to help with the clearing process? As we know and heard from providers, that the DOE process is hindering folks from hiring staff, and this is happening not just with your providers, but even on the DYCD side, it is a huge problem, and people are not talking. So how are you working with DOH to get that done? My next question, we understand that there strides have been made related to invoicing, but there is still, there's a glitch in the system that's not being reciprocated in contracts that don't register, and budgets are not accepted, then invoices cannot be submitted. So what is the outstanding dollar amount owed to providers for FY '23?
Thank you, Councilmember. I may go a little bit out of order, I have your questions, though.
As long as you answer all of them, we will be fine.
You're ready. So let me start with, I'm looking at my list here, DOH permits, and so we do actually have a very good partnership with Department of Health, we have a liaison between our office and the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, and specifically around childcare issues, which aren't just limited to permitting, but certainly permitting is a, is a piece, absolutely. And so if there is a site that has a permitting question or a concern, and they're unable to resolve it through...
So permitting, I don't think is the issue, it's the clearing process. Like, we know that people are not cleared for months, and sometimes years. I've worked in, in facilities where people were not cleared for a year, so that's not the issue permitting, it, it's an issue, but the clearance of the employees are where we need to be really focused at. And so if you do have a partnership with them, how is that being related with, with the providers?
So, again, we don't manage the clearance process, but we certainly work with DOH, so anytime a provider reaches out to us directly with a question that is much more related to DOH or to the clearance process, we obviously work with them directly to find out what the answer is, what the status is, what we can do to support. So anything and everything within that realm, that is a ongoing partnership, it's an ongoing communication, but we also want to be able to be the bridge between both agencies, if necessary, to support providers in any way that we can. And, and we've seen that work, and we've seen that really work well, and work in collaboration.
So I, I, I want to say, we shouldn't say it works well, because it doesn't, and so that's part of the problem, where we're not admitting, right? So, first step is admitting that it doesn't work, because it isn't working, and it's not all DOE, right? It's DOH and the system, it does not work. And so I just want to be clear about that. It's a system that has been antiquated, it has not worked, people are not being cleared, so I'm not going to say here and just be like, oh, it works, because it's not. And it hasn't worked for me, and it hasn't been working for these providers, so I just want to make sure we're using the correct language here.
Working well, meaning the, the communication with DOH. To the system of clearances of, of, for staffing, that is, that is something that DOH leads, and we can certainly, will share that feedback with our DOH partners, we will continue to. I, I do know that they're working very hard on that system as well.
It's not about people not working hard, it's about the system not working. I want to be clear, because we know they're working hard, we're not saying you're not working hard, but it ain't working.
And I will continue to share that feedback with our DOH partners. Thank you, Councilmember. Did you want to take one of the other questions?
Do you need me to repeat any?
So, so I think one of the, thank you, Councilmember. One of the other questions was, how much has been paid for FY '23? You know, about $630 million has been paid out already, that's between Councilmember advances, and also payments for invoices, and, you know, we won't know until all the paperwork is in, essentially, but we would, we do expect to pay out approximately another $600 million for, for FY '23.
That's a, that's a large sum.
Yes, yes.
And for our EDY seats in 3K, you asked for specifically approximately 10% of our 3K seats are EDY. Previous contracts that were provided to...
Is that 10%?
Yep. Previous contracts that were provided to providers over the last several years, really were, and you heard this from the other panelists, too, were primarily school day, school year seats. And so that is, again, that's the work that we continue to do, identifying where there's need of where those SDY seats, within contractual and legal provisions of what their contract terms are, wherever we could change that, we are and we have, and we will continue to do that work.
I just want to say, just thinking about that, 10% is really low, especially when we're thinking about working parents, right? And so my first question was around, how are we looking at the requirement for families? And that's one of the things that does not work, right? If I'm a working parent, I cannot pick my child up at 3 o'clock, so that's, like, things have to make sense for them to work. So even if I'm a parent and I need it, that's going to affect enrollment, because I'm not going to enroll my child in this program, because it does not work. So, so saying we have only 10% of extended day or extended year, that's a problem, so we should really be looking at how are we moving in a place where extended day is the norm, and we are having at least 90%, because that's what people need, especially working families.
We, we agree, we absolutely agree, and that's why we've changed seats from school day, school year to extended day. Again, extended day, extended year, funded through CCDBG, is income-eligible, right? So families do need to be income-eligible. Some families are, and some families aren't. But where we can make that need, and where we know there is a need, that's where we need to prioritize it. As well as, I just don't want to shortchange our Head Start seats, which also offer extended days and year-round programming, that's also an option for families outside of extended day and extended year seats.
Yeah, I'm, like I said, I, I, I hear you, but, but I think that that's part of the issue around enrollment. We can do recruitment all we want, but if there's an issue, and it, and it's not fitting the need, then I'm not going to enroll my child. So, we also, I think, it drives me crazy, especially with, in the city, a lot of times we are, we get stuck in a way of, like, we've done this for so long, this way, we don't think about how we're reimagining, and we need to be at a place where we're reimagining this, and it's working for the people. Just, just my last question, just around, like, how are we also just looking at all of the other things and requirements around, like, you know, you know, the, the income eligibility, and all these other things that parents have to do in order to be in these programs? Because if those things, I know some of it is federal, right? Some of those come from the federal government and the state, and those are things we can't control. But I'm thinking about, what are the, some of the things we can control to start alleviating some of those things, so it can be more accessible to some families throughout the city?
Well, that's a great question, and, I mean, couldn't agree more, you know, when there's pieces in that process that could feel like barriers to family, then it's counter to everything that all of us are trying to do. And some of that we have no control over, right? Some of those are federal requirements, and, and there's a process for that. What I will say we do have control over, though, is again, and we've heard it now multiple times, is the system in which families even apply to be eligible, right? Because that system in itself was once upon a time very arduous, very cumbersome, very difficult, that, you know, for a family to go through that process, you know, it felt like this is too much, or it just felt impossible, why do it? And they end up in a different, a different system for care, rather than taking advantage of something that they are entitled to. So we've actually streamlined that system, within federal regulations, within state regulations, of what that can look like. Turn that turnaround time, while the state requires us to be able to process those applications within 30 days, we're down to 14 days or less, because that's 14 days, imagine a family waiting for care, so that they can actually start going to work, or start going to school, and if you had to wait over 30 days just for that care to happen, you know, you would give up, right? You're either giving up on unemployment or that school, or giving up on that childcare, and, and that child may end up in a different place. And so we've actually improved that system dramatically in order to support families. There's opportunity at all of our family welcome centers that our First Deputy Chancellor spoke about, families can walk in and, and fill out that application with someone literally sitting next to them to go through that process, because it's an arduous process. It requires a lot of different paperwork, again, it's a, it's a federal process, so it requires a lot of pieces that need to be complete in order for the process to even, the application to even be submitted. We have a, a call-in center, where you can apply straight through the programs, you walk into any of our CBOs, any of the places where we have extended day, our family childcare providers, they too are instrumental and incredible at supporting families and going through that process. So I say that just to say that, in terms of lifting those barriers, it's also that infrastructure that wasn't there, that we've actually built, to make sure that we've improved upon that process, so access is much greater.
No, and I appreciate that, and, and I know it seems, it, it becomes really hard, because the system moves so slow, and we need to be looking at everything, we're urgency. And so for me, this is an urgent matter, because families are suffering. And so, yes, there might be some strides, and there's some things, but one, I tell people all the time, I don't get rewarded for the job that I do, this is the job, and this is what we signed up for, so we're going to continue to push and make sure that these things are happening, and, and making sure that we're uplifting these stories, and make sure that the families are getting what they deserve. And so, like I said, we want, we look to continue to work with you, and I will be expecting someone to reach out to my office about these seats that are not filled in my district, because I haven't got it yet, so it's really important, so thank you.
Expect that call tomorrow morning, Councilmember. So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
She'll put you on blast if you don't call her. Well, thank you. When the families walk into these welcome centers, once they fill out the application, what's the wait time? Is there a waitlist they have to be? How, how, how long does it take for a child to be placed? Because we're talking about maybe that person's waiting to go to work, waiting to go to school, what's the, what's the timeline for placement?
So there's a few different routes that a family can go when they come into a family welcome center. Again, if they're looking for extended day, extended year seats, which we have plenty available, and they walk into a family welcome center, and they're walked through that process, there's paperwork that they have to complete, they have to have things that belong to them personally to submit. So sometimes families come in and don't have all of that information at once, and so it's going to rely on them being able to obtain it, or to be able to obtain proof of birth, et cetera. But once that is submitted, and all of those pieces are in place, as I shared, we have turned this around to a 14-day or less turnaround time, which is a stride, it is, it's a huge accomplishment when, you know, again, we're really held to a 30-day turnaround time, so this is much greater in, in a less amount of time. That's if you're going the route of extended day, extended year. If you're looking for a school day, school year seat, there are certain things that are required for all DOE children, all DOE students that are enrolling in New York City public schools, and those are, there's a list, it's very well-publicized, and as long as families bring those in, and there's space available, the school of their choice, the program of their choice, the setting of their choice, they can be enrolled in the same day.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Felice?
Thank you for the data. Thank you so much, Chair. One issue that I continue to hear about in the Bronx is the lack of access to 3K and pre-K programs. Families and students receiving offers, and having to decline those offers, because they're not able to travel 30, 45 minutes every single morning. So just curious, how many families or students have received offers and have declined the offer to a specific program or provider?
I don't know if we have that information with us, but we can get back to you, Councilmember Felice. But it, it's exactly our point, that while there may be seats available, they may not feel accessible to families, and that's the work that we have ahead of us of, of changing around, to make sure that it's not just about saying we have seats, which is what's been the case, but to really make sure that those seats are in the places where families can access them, in a way that's much more convenient than a 40-minute subway ride.
Yeah, we would really appreciate if you could get us those numbers. Also, how many pre-K and 3K seats do we have per borough? Can you give us a breakdown, 3K and pre-K?
I don't know if we have it by borough, I know we've given to Chair Joseph a breakdown by district, and we can certainly provide one by borough as well, if that's helpful. Yeah.
So what district has the most amount of seats, and how, how many seats does that district have? And what district has the least amount of seats? And how many seats does that district have?
Sorry, Councilmember, just, give us just a second.
Yep. If we could pause my time, that would be great.
I feel like we have that. So, doing a quick eyeball, looks like, and Dr. Ahmed will correct me if I'm getting this wrong, but it looks like District 31, which is Staten Island, not surprising, has the, the most 3K seats. I'm just looking at 3K right now, so there's about 3,200 seats in Staten Island, about 2,800 are enrolled there. And I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember, you, you also asked, what, what, what district had the most seats and...
And which one has the least amount of seats?
Has the least amount of seats.
And what borough is also, is it located in?
Yeah.
Let's see, I think maybe, is it District 1?
District 16?
Yep, District 16.
District 16 has 537 3K seats, this is 3K, it's not pre-K, 537 of which, and they've got 343 enrolled, just to give you a sense of the proportion. That's the, that's the least number, District 16, which is Brooklyn.
Brooklyn, okay.
Brooklyn.
What part of Brooklyn, is that East Brooklyn, my guess?
That's Central, Central Brooklyn.
Central Brooklyn.
Central Brooklyn.
Okay. Earlier, you mentioned there's approximately 1,600 vacancies. Where are most of these vacancies located?
It's actually 16,000?
Yeah, 16,000, sorry.
16,000, the, again, we'll, we'll give you all of this data, Councilmember, but just, again, just doing a quick eyeball, you know, let me not try to do math while I'm sitting here, but we will, we will give you the district-by-district, borough-by-borough number of seats, enrollment, and, and gaps.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get all that to you.
And let me also say that, you know, it's extremely disappointing that, you know, the poorest and neediest districts have the least amount of seats years later. That is extremely disappointing, and also unacceptable, and I'm hoping that changes. It's always the same thing with every single issue, whether it's education, jobs, always the same issue. I hope we could take real steps to change that. Final question, well, actually, two more questions. Going back to the wage and the documents and payment, going back to that topic, it seems like the process for submitting these documents has created many of the issues that we're talking about. Can you talk to us about that process step by step? What exactly do providers need to do in order to get, to receive payment for their work?
Thank you, council member. We've actually done a lot of work to eliminate burdensome requirements. We heard from a lot of providers that the requirements that had been in place for the last few years were quite burdensome. A number of documents that needed to be submitted with each invoice, we've actually eliminated, and really boiled it down to a profit and loss statement or a general ledger, which has been widely distributed to programs so that they have, and, and training as well, so that, again, they don't need to submit individualized pieces of paperwork through each invoice. And so that has been extremely well-received and extremely helpful in the invoice submission process, both for submission and both for review and process.
Just, I don't want to chew up your time, council member, but, you know, for, all of these are great questions.
I was going to say, you already did.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry, sorry.
No, no, just kidding, you could, you could finish the point.
But, you know, the, it, it points up a greater need, just to be clear, as much as, you know, Kara and her team and, and our CO's team is trying to make things easier, trying to do better customer service, we have a system, which is a good thing, of 800-plus providers being the backbone, community-based providers are the backbone of our system, and there really isn't infrastructure to help them with all these things. And so one of the things we are going to do, we haven't figured out what form it takes, we want to work with, with you all, we have to provide back office support. In our view, what should happen is these providers, like the one you, you had today, and these are unbelievable, awesome people who are doing work with, with our kids, they live in the communities, they employ people in the communities they serve, they should have an intermediary where they can just send an email saying, here's my paperwork, I don't want to deal with the rest of it, and have that organization deal with us, make sure everybody gets paid on time, all the budgets, everything is approved, including even the DOH issues. So that's what we're looking into. In our view, if we could go back in time, if we're going to have a system that depends on these 800, very often, very small providers, we would create that infrastructure for them so we don't have to do a big push to help them to get us the paperwork that allows us to pay them. That's just not, that's not a great system.
Okay. And final question, what steps have been taking, have been taken, and also moving forward will be taken as well, to make sure that every zip code has access to seats? So have been taking, taken in the last few years, and also will be taken as well moving forward, to change the numbers that we are seeing?
Absolutely. So as I mentioned previously, there's been an internal survey that's been going out to our providers, to our school leaders, to our family childcare networks, all to ask and lean into what they're seeing in their communities and what the needs are. And based on that, we've been able to make significant changes dating back to last spring, and all the changes that were made going into this fall to support both 3K, pre-K, but also our infant toddler programs, and as we've talked about, seat changes from school day, school year to extended day, extended year. In addition to that, there's a formal needs analysis that's happening through an external organization, where they are going to be collecting lots of good data to help us understand how to best move around some of these seats, shift resources, get them where they're actually needed, and understand better what are the needs and preferences of families and individual communities. So hopefully, the combination of those two things, the goal really is, is to make some very data-informed changes, instead of just having seats in places and not really having the data that supports it.
Yeah, and what's the timeline for that?
That should be within the next few months.
Thank you, council member. Yeah, how much is that going to cost, and who's, who's handling that? Who will lead that?
So that's the work that's happening between my office, the Early Childhood Office, and other members of our, of our division in the Division of, of the Department of Education. So we're working together on that, because it's going to, it's going to include a lot of folks, right? Because when we think about the seat allocation, we're thinking about enrollment, right, and enrollment needs, and so really working with our Office of Student Enrollment. We're thinking about the fiscal aspect of it, so not just within early childhood finance, but thinking about it from a systems perspective of what those seats are going to cost and what it'll look like, based on whatever the needs analysis tells us, how those seats need to be changed, and what will be the cost of that, and what that will end up looking like. And we're also working very closely with our, with our partners at City Hall to really collectively work on this, think together, and share progress and updates.
When, when you sent over the breakdown, is, can you send it to us by seat type as well? Borough, seat types? Send the breakdown for us. Thank you. Councilmember Restler?
Thank you so much, Chair Joseph. Tremendously appreciate your leadership on this issue and of this committee. It is good to see you again, Deputy Chancellor Weisberg and Deputy Chancellor Ahmed. Thank you both for making the time to be here. Just some simple questions, ideally yes, no. Is the reported $568 million cut to 3K for next fiscal year accurate?
I have to check the, the exact number, council member.
It's been widely reported in The Times and other places.
And, and I would characterize that as not a, not a cut, because we are...
Appreciate your characterization, but just yes, no, if it's possible.
I, I don't have the number right in front of me, but I, I have no reason...
This has been the widely reported number on the cut to 3K for next year, so assuming that it's accurate, and that it's what we saw in the budget documents that's been released by the mayor. You're alleging that's a 6,000-seat reduction, is that correct? That's what you've reported in previous hearings?
Not from current levels, no.
That's, you're reducing funding for 6,000 seats in the budget reduction that you're planning for next year? That that is the scale of the program you're reducing it by?
That, I believe, I believe that is what it would have funded, yes. Additional, 6,000 additional seats, correct.
6,000 additional seats are not being funded? Is the program, is the size of the program being maintained year over year, except for those 6,000?
Yes.
Okay, so a $568 million reduction for 6,000 seats. I'm not superb at math, but that would lead us to a $94,700 per seat reduc, $94,700 per seat. That is how much it costs. The CBC did a report just a couple of years ago, and found $14,000 per seat was the average cost for a UPK seat in New York City. So all of a sudden, your cost per seat increased sevenfold in a matter of less than, in three years' time. What I think is clear is that this isn't a 6,000-seat reduction. You are reducing the number of seats in the 3K system down to what you're serving this year, which is 36,000 seats, maybe 40,000 seats. We're seeing a dramatic reduction in the capacity of the 3K program, despite the fact that we have 65,000 to 70,000 three-year-olds in New York City. So there is no path to universal 3K in New York. You are destroying this program by taking half a billion dollars of funding away and claiming that it's just avoiding a few thousand-seat addition.
So if I could respond, council member, then good, good to see you as a...
Always. You know, I love my constituents.
What's that?
I love my constituents.
Appreciate that, and our, just, just...
I would have been a lot more mean if you weren't one, just to be... Sorry, Dr. Ahmed.
No offense, Speaker.
Maybe one day, Dr. Ahmed will be...
Yeah, you can move into the 33rd, it's a beautiful...
Never know.
I don't know where you live, so, I'm sure it's a beautiful district.
Our, our numbers, council member, just to, just to level set, and we'll go back and check. I under, I understand the math you're doing, and, and let us go back and clarify what it is we're saying about per seat. The 6,000 number, I'm not familiar with, but I'm not doubting you're getting that from, from our documents. Our numbers are, we have right now about 55,000 3K seats?
Right.
And that includes family childcare, that includes...
Understood. But you, 55,000 seats, not 55,000 kids enrolled.
Correct.
And so the, the, there was supposed to be a 6,000-seat increase next year. I don't even mind if you all were to say that increase is not needed based on the demand you're seeing.
Right.
There's, we think there's 65,000 three-year-olds in New York City, 55,000 seats is actually adequate. But that's not what you're doing. You're saying you're not adding 6,000 seats, and you're cutting half a billion dollars, which amounts to nearly $100,000 a seat. That's more than Horace Mann costs. That's more than the fanciest private school in New York City, and it just doesn't make sense for 3K. It's two years of college, right? I mean, it doesn't add up. And so what you're actually doing is destroying this program and cutting it down to the bone. Three, or, go ahead, sorry.
Just to be clear, we're not destroying the program. We're spending as much money and providing at least as many seats, maybe more seats, than we're providing this year.
It is via benign neglect. In the de Blasio administration, when there were 40 staff doing early childhood education outreach, a $4 million outreach budget, there was a significant campaign to engage families, meet them where they are, use dynamic data sets of the most current data to reach three-year-olds, reach families in multiple languages, hard-to-reach families. That's not happening.
And there were 10, tens of thousands of empty seats with all of that.
What I can say is that we're not seeing the enrollment, we're not seeing any effort on outreach right now.
Then why do we have 20,000, 20% higher applications?
Well, I hope that you're going to have the seats for these kids, if we can actually make it happen. Because if you're cutting half a billion dollars from this program, it doesn't add up. The math doesn't work.
Yeah, and so, again, not saying we can't do better on outreach, but I want to be clear, during the time of launch, when there were signs on bus stops and t-shirts, as Councilmember Brewer was talking about, there were tens of thousands of empty seats with that, with that effort.
Every year, the de Blasio administration would move seats around, modify where the, where they needed to push and pull to meet the needs of the UPK program, and expanded it to 3K. I appreciate that there has been uneven enrollments across the city, there's also uneven seats across the city. And that needs to shift year over year, and you need to look at where there's growth, and that's a reasonable thing. What I can say is, is to Dr., to Deputy Chancellor Ahmed's point earlier, when you have widespread vacancies at extended day, extended year seats, it is a tremendous indictment on the lack of outreach that you all are doing. Because every family in New York City is dying for an extended day, extended year seat. We are losing families, emigrating out of New York City in droves, who cannot find affordable childcare, who cannot access early childhood education. And if there was outreach happening, then those seats would be filled, because everybody needs the 10-day, 10-hour-a-day, year-round coverage that those seats provide. If, so, I, I, to me, there's no explanation other than the fact that no outreach is, that very limited outreach is occurring, and that we're not making the efforts to reach families where they are to engage them in this vital initiative, in this vital program, just like outreach is required to engage people in any governmental program and service. And, go ahead.
We are doing, first of all, again, not saying that we can't do better, and we want to do more. We want every family to have the information about whether, and, yes, I get it, I'm a parent. Yes, of course you want, it's true for K-12, by the way. You'd, you'd like to have quality childcare up to 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock, so we get it. We want to make sure that information is in the hands of every parent. But we are doing extensive outreach, extensive outreach already, and the proof is in the pudding. Applications are up. Now, maybe they could be up more. It's not going, outreach is not going to fill the gap that we have.
Outreach can make an enormous difference. And, and I can say that I'm eager to partner with you, I think every member of the City Council is eager to partner with you, and every member, and, and with Chair Joseph's leadership, with Speaker Adams' leadership, we want to fight to see more funding invested in early childhood education, that what is being proposed in next year's budget would truly destroy this program. And we have to get back on a path to universal 3K as quickly as possible, and we're going to do everything in our power to make that happen. Thank you for answering the questions.
Thank you, council member.
Chair Joseph, can I just make one comment? I just, I just want to make sure that we're all so clear that, you know, just this year alone, we added an additional 8,000 3K seats. And I would actually say that it's not about cutting back on 3K seats, but as we've shared, I think multiple times now through this hearing, that seats are being converted. There have been a number of unused pre-K seats that needed to be converted. To the council member's point about constantly looking at those changes, that is the work that we're doing. And we're looking to see where we can convert those seats to make sure that they are meeting the exact need that we're seeing in communities, whether that be pre-K to 3K, 3K to pre-K, filling the gap where there's missing, there's infant toddler seats, and then there are pre-K seats, and there were no 3K seats in between, to ensure continuity for families. And so it won't be a matter of taking back or reducing 3K seats, it will be a matter of making sure that we are putting the seats exactly where they're needed, and the age type that's needed for that community.
Thank you. We had a question for you. I have a, so on February 10th, just to back, piggyback, the administration announced the creation of the First Ever Mayor's Office of Childcare and Early Childhood Education, which will streamline the childcare process, remove red tape, and provide support to the entire sector. How long has that plan, how long has the plan to open a new early childhood office has been in works?
Yeah, it's, it's actually, it's been in the mayor's blueprint, and so that is something that the mayor had announced going back to last spring, if I'm not mistaken.
Do you know how many people will be staffed in that office?
Sorry, that I, that I don't know.
So the, so you don't know how many staff, you don't know what the description of the roles, the responsibilities of those that will be employed in that office?
What we certainly understand, and just in our, you know, close partnership with the First Deputy Mayor and, and with her team, is that this is absolutely not opportunity to support with coordination among city agencies that are supporting childcare in this city. And so to the council members' earlier points around DOH and DOE, and the different pieces that providers need to contend with, to support their own work and their own programming, that this office will absolutely support to create seamless structures to support the childcare community. So we're looking forward to continuing our partnership and, and work with, with this office.
So why, why not perfect the office you have before you create a new office?
So I won't be able to speak to anything outside of what I understand is the vision and mission of this office, which we are in support of, to obviously work in close partnership, not just with the office itself, but the multiple city agencies that are touch points with this office. And so that's the work that's going to continue, and that's the work that's ahead.
So how is the office, your office and this office will coordinate and deliver service for New York City children?
Our understanding is that we will continue to work in close coordination with this office, along with the other city agencies, because there is a touch point across. It's, it's a system that doesn't just, you know, childcare is not limited to just DOE, right? There are non-DOE contracted programs that exist across the city, and so that this office will be able to support all of the work that's happening across New York City.
Will it also address the backlog in reimbursements to early childhood, and will it also address future reimbursements?
That is our work, you know, and so that's the work that I think we've been talking about here. That's the work that we will continue to, to stress and to emphasize and to prioritize, to support those submission of any back invoices, improve upon systems, and support our providers.
Okay, so the vacancies in your office, and how do they plan on staffing, getting, I mean, supporting your office while working with this office?
Again, I, I can't speak to specifics of what this office will, will do in terms of supporting various city agencies. We feel we are sufficiently staffed for the work that's ahead of us. We will continue to look at what work we need to prioritize, we will continue to ensure that we've got the right people in the right places to support that work and to actualize our vision.
Earlier, the panel talked about pay parities for CBOs. How do we plan on addressing that? That's one way to retain. We saw we had to do 4410 in order to have students with special need preschool teachers. How do we plan on doing that? What's the requirement? And also, they talked about teacher longevity, just equal pay to DOE educators. Can you address that and tell me what the plan is?
Absolutely. That is a, a huge priority for this administration. As you said, Chair Joseph, that was a commitment that our chancellor had made to ensure that our providers, our 4410 providers, that they and their staff actually had an increase in salaries that became equal to that of CBO-contracted early childhood programs, long overdue. And so we were very proud to be able to deliver on that, and to continue to deliver on that, and to support our 4410 providers. The work that we're doing, and I know that this is a priority for the, for the administration as a whole, in terms of ensuring that there's compensation equity, and to do that, we want to make sure that we have a workforce among our contracted providers that is also credentialed and certified, just like our DOE peers. And so we are, we're putting those supports in place. And so my office, our team at the DOE, we are absolutely doing the work that we need to, to support the workforce in the CBO sector, our family childcare providers, to earn degrees, to earn the credits needed to earn a degree, to earn credentials, identifying where they are in a study plan, and really empowering our providers and their staff to continue on with their own professional studies and become certified, so that when we are at that place of compensation equity becoming actualized in this city, we have a workforce that's ready to receive those funds as well. And that, that, again, thinking about our workforce in general in our CBOs, women, women of color, this is going to foster economic mobility for generations to come. So this is huge and significant work. We're proud to be involved in it within our own early childhood office, and making great We're proud to be involved in it within our own early childhood office and making great strides and really partnering with universities across the city to make that happen, and partnering with our City Hall partners to ensure that compensation equity becomes a, a real thing.
What is the current salary for a CBO, a current early childhood CBO educator?
So it, again, it varies based on credentials.
Pay parities for CBO directors as well, and support staff?
Yeah, that, that's certainly my goal. You know, I think that if we're doing the work, we should absolutely be fairly compensated for it.
Absolutely. I'm going to pass it on to my colleague, Shaker, and then I'll come back.
Thank you so much, Chair Joseph, for today's hearing. Thank you all for your testimony. Let's have a few short questions, but, you know, just to reiterate, I mean, you've heard it also from, as Councilmember Brewer said, too, you know, a couple things. One is, I think we can all agree on how essential early education is and 3K is. As I've said before, prior hearings, too, foundational for children. I have young children, one who just went to 3K last year. We all know how beneficial it is. Number one. Number two, I think we can all agree, at least from Councilmember Brewer's question, that DOE must do a much, much better job, is not doing a satisfactory job of reaching out to, to communities now to, to fill those seats. And so, you know, I just want to, again, you know, state for the record, too, that my serious concern, as many others have said, too, that knowing how fundamental this program is, knowing DOE's failure to do adequate outreach to fill those seats, the fact that DOE's choice is to first reduce the seats, claim they're not going to be filled, rather than spend more resources, more attention, more energy to aggressively recruit, because it just doesn't logically make sense that with the number of families in New York City, the number of parents who depend on childcare, that we can't fill the overwhelming majority, if not all, of those seats. So, you know, I do have very serious concerns about the approach here. I think it's a policy matter. The focus should really be on, on, you know, what the latter, as I just said, instead of actually cutting back on those vacancies. But I have--
Can I just jump, if that's okay, Councilmember? Good to see you, as always. Just, just to clarify, and I understand your point, but I just want to clarify that we have no plan to reduce the number of seats. We are concerned, certainly in 3K, that we have about 16,000 empty seats, as Dr. Ahmed has talked about. We think we can alleviate that in a few different ways. One is reconfiguring. Not, we don't have a plan to reduce the number. We have a plan to make sure we are meeting the actual community demand. That may mean more seats. As, as Dr. Ahmed said, we've actually added seats just in the, in the past year. And also to do outreach, absolutely to do outreach, that is part of it. So I just wanted to clarify, I understand your point, but our plan is, we don't have a plan in place next year to, to reduce the number. What we have a plan to do is test what the demand is in particular neighborhoods, birth through five, not just for 3K, but birth through five, and try to match up as much as we can, which might, might end up increasing the number of 3K seats. We certainly don't have a plan to cut those seats. I just wanted to reassure you of that.
I appreciate the clarification, although it does feel that way, given also the federal money that's, you know, being taken out as well, which is a huge part of sustaining this program. So, you know, I do appreciate that this is looking at the need, but the reason why we don't see it that way is because of the funding that supports it, that sustains that program. So I have a few questions in particular that I want to get to. One, and I apologize if this was already asked, I had to step out for a bit, too. But, you know, focusing now on the providers that are, you know, way behind in reimbursement, and that is also a whole separate issue, but a massive concern is that, you know, and I think you mentioned it before, too, Mr. Wispak, as a nonprofit leader before, myself as well, knowing full well what that means, and I know personally, you know, having to scramble to make payroll when the city contracting process is obscenely delayed in payments and what that means from payroll to payroll. Given how big of an issue this has been, why hasn't there been an examination by the DOE of increasing the advance? The providers are, as I testified before, seeking a 75% advance in the contract. I know any organization could really benefit from that. We're approaching on 75% of the year, coming to an end, you know, relatively soon. So that could really overnight alleviate this immense pressure that providers are feeling.
You know, again, we hear you want to do everything we can to stabilize the sector. The, I just want to say, I think the solution is more in the nature of providing that back office support. So as a, again, as a former nonprofit head, if I could have invoiced every month and gotten paid every month, I can deal with that no problem. We have a lot of providers that get the advance, which is great. We're happy to provide it and don't invoice for a while, and that leads to needing to catch up. So just to say, there's some issues there. The, you know, we get our revenue, as you all know, from the federal government, from the state government, based on the number of students we serve. I mean, that's true everywhere, that's not a New York City thing. So, you know, with knowing that particular provider is going to see variation in their enrollment, very difficult for us to front all the money before we see what the enrollment is. The thing we really, really want to avoid, which does have, have to happen, even, even with a 35% advance, it has to happen in some cases, is to have to recoup money, because that's, that's even more difficult for, for our providers. And that's an obligation. Like, we're not, we're not legally permitted to just say, well, you know, just, just keep the money, it doesn't matter what the contract performance is. So just to say, we're willing to look at anything to, to try to stabilize this sector. We think we do actually give a pretty healthy advance at this point. We just need to figure out how to make sure that all of our small providers get the support they need, so they're getting paid every month, like clockwork. That's what we really want to get to.
And I appreciate that, I understand the reasoning. I would just urge you all to really reconsider that and look at that, because, one, 35%, and I know it, too, from my legal services days, too, that's really one quarter, right? And so it's a little bit more in this instance, but effectively, we're talking about one quarter, which gets you through, you know, three months of the year. And that's, you know, really the, the end of it, but obviously, we're much further along at this point. The other issue is the providers then are, are squeezed on both ends. They get a very small advance, doesn't cover them, you know, nearly as, as much as they need to be. And on top of that, as I understand it, the, you can't seek to recoup on your invoices until the prior one is paid, which, you know, in this situation, given all the backlog, really at the end of the day, the bottom line is, no matter what the reality situation, is that these providers just need money to pay to stay afloat. And so that's why I think, given the exigencies here right now, revisiting the advance is a way that could overnight change the situation, because right now, we're not facing the theoretical concerns that you're raising, we're facing the other, the opposite problem, which is they're, they've run out of cash.
Understood, understood. Just another clarification, I think, I think somebody mentioned this. One of the, one of the fixes that's, you know, doesn't sound very exciting, but it was very helpful to providers, we were able to do in the sprint for FY22, is to allow multiple invoices to be submitted. And that's something that we're allowing once again this month for FY23. So that should be a help to the providers that have gotten a bit behind in the, in the invoicing. But we understand your point on larger advances, and that's something we'll take back and consider.
Absolutely, appreciate that.
I just wanted to say one thing, and I do appreciate, I do appreciate your thoughts on this, and I'd love to continue talking and thinking some more together. I just want to also just really emphasize the point that the conversations we're having today really go hand in hand, right? And so I want to really just put an emphasis on the remarks that the First Deputy Chancellor made around not reducing seats, but getting, shifting seats to where they're needed, but also in supporting our providers in particular, who have been unfortunately the most impacted by the unhealthy competition of seats and oversaturation of seats, of getting them the right seats that they need to serve their community, because that enrollment goes hand in hand then with invoicing. And so that the two really can't be separated, and so that's why this work becomes very critical. And, and again, looking forward to our partnership to make that happen.
And I look forward, and I appreciate that, I look forward to hearing more, too, about, you know, what you all can do when you revisit this, the advance issue, I think it's a critical one. And on that note, you know, there's, there's a provider in both my district and actually also in Councilmember Juan's district, too, that, with Mark Trager, too. Former Councilmember Mark Trager, that we've been reaching out to and working with, who's been really helpful in working on this issue. But the fact of the matter is, they're still very far behind. I just want to read to you, as of now, they, Little Friends is behind 264,000 on payments owed, Woodside Friends is behind 70,000, and Woodside Friends Christ Lutheran Church is behind 320,000, give or take. Those are really sizable amounts, and I think those are invoices that are owed from, I want to say, November till January. And I'd love to know if you all have an update on where, where they stand in terms of getting the reimbursement as soon as possible.
A member from your team actually reached out, I think to Mark, and, and from Councilmember Juan's district, and we've been in active contact with this provider, if we're talking about the same one, which I think we are.
Yep.
And her invoices are completely up to date and have been paid. So those records certainly, our records certainly sound very different than what you've stated. Happy to talk to you more about it, happy to, to chime in the provider as well. We were in contact with her as recently as yesterday, again, when there was another inquiry. She is saying that she is fully paid. So I'm not sure if this was a previous inquiry, I'm, I couldn't speak to those details, but more than happy to continue the follow-up.
Okay, I'd urge you all to follow up, yeah, and I appreciate the work that you've been doing. You know, we spoke with the provider today before this hearing and heard this information, too. So let's, let's figure out what's going on. I want to make sure it's a top priority of mine, that they get reimbursed as soon as possible, so I appreciate you all looking into it. And the last question I had, the chair will permit me, one more question, is just, you know, on another note, you know, I've been following the positions that I've raised before, too, as, as Chair Joseph, the early education positions that were first, you know, slated for, for transfer or removal and are now back in. There's one in particular I wanted to ask about, which were the policy specialists in the early education classroom. Dr. Ahmed, you may know more about this. What's the status of their positions in, in particular?
The DOH specialist?
Yeah, I think the title is policy specialist. I can get you the exact name afterwards, too, but, you know, I assumed it was, you know, that was the name of the position, but policy specialist?
Oh, the policy specialist, okay, because there's DOH, so there is a DOH specialist that's assigned, and I'm actually probably using the wrong terminology for DOH, but there's a DOH person that's assigned to each program, a licensed program, who comes out to conduct inspections, they have a full-on inspection list. There was a programs, policy support specialist, I think, who you might be referring to, that was actually set up to do the exact same role in supporting programs, and they had a lot of value in, in the support, but certainly duplicative of the DOH role. And so they, there are still policy support specialists within the early childhood office that have taken on a variety of different functions based on their own interest of what teams they'd like to be part of, work streams that they'd like to be part of, and certainly helping to still support providers.
So that's policy support specialist, that's, that's the question. They've been, some of them have reached out to us, too, and have raised my concern as well. So I do hope that these are positions that are being kept and they're being supported, because we were hearing a lot of concerns from policy support specialists who felt that--
They are, they are still with our early childhood team, they're an invaluable piece of our early childhood team.
Thank you, those are my questions, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vilas, thank you for waiting.
Good afternoon, thank you so much, Chair Joseph, and good to see you, both Dr. Ahmed and Deputy Chancellor Wispak. I'd like to talk a little bit about special education, one of my favorite topics, in particular preschool special education, since in general, we know we have had a very hard time in our city addressing the full and complete needs of children with special needs. So I'd like to know, in terms of, in December, the mayor and the chancellor announced that they would open 400 preschool special K seats in January, and another 400 in spring to address the significant shortage. I'd actually like to know on the record what the full scope of the shortages, and then would like to know, for those seats that are opening in spring, do we have, what is the, the status? Do we have the CBOs and schools lined up for those classes? And how many seats and CBOs do you have lined up to open? I'm sorry if I conflated those two questions.
No, that was actually, that's perfect, thank you, Councilmember. So yes, so we are proud to say, and again, we thank Chair Joseph for her support with this work, that we did fulfill the chancellor's commitment of ensuring that there are 400 seats by January. There are approximately 400 seats right now across our, 400 newly created seats across our 4410 providers. And I do want to just emphasize, 6,000 seats were stabilized through this contract enhancement. And that's often misunderstood and, and not taken as seriously as one should probably understand it, because what it does is it helps to retain seats for our children with disabilities. So this contract enhancement allowed for those seats to remain intact, because it helped to retain teachers by increasing salary. It helped to ensure that there was a longer day, as we talk about, the length of day for our children, to support even working families, right? And so that is a huge accomplishment, we're extremely proud of it, and still recognize that there's work to be done. So we are working with our 4410 providers, those who have already gone through the contract enhancement process, those that are going to be coming online, to open up an additional 400 seats in the immediate. That is what our goal in our, in our work and what we're aiming towards. But we're also working very closely with our special education colleagues in the Department of Education to really understand best what the needs are of the students that they're seeing in terms of referrals, so that we get them in the right seat type. You know, it goes to this larger conversation of making sure that we're aligning seats to the needs of children. So, so yes, to your question of that work continuing with our 4410 providers in particular, to support them, they are experts in this work. And so they are working through, many of them are ready to open up some new classes as they come online. They are working through, as we've heard from other providers, they're working through their own recruitment of staff as they receive funding through the contract enhancement. It makes that kind of recruitment that much easier. And so again, big benefit of that process.
So always happy to hear of progress. I guess in particular of the 400 that are coming online, how many do you have set, ready to go, and how many do you still have in process?
So just in last check, we've got about 250 that are happening across 4410 providers that we've been informed by those 4410 providers, that they have either already opened up or soon will be opening up. It was just based on staffing at their, at their sites. That would leave us with another, you know, 100-plus to, to serve children. We also want to make sure, though, that we are doing that in coordination with our special ed colleagues, so that we are understanding what the referral rate is, which we know is going to be evolving. This is not going to be a one-and-done process. We want this to be an ongoing, constant assessment, a constant review of what is the need. We want to serve children in their least restrictive environment at all times, but based on their IEP. So depending upon what that is, whether that is an inclusion class, whether that's a SKIS class, whether that is a class, a special class for six and eights or twelves. And so that's the work that continues to be ahead of us.
So in terms of the, first, I'm, I'm happy to hear about the stabilization of the 6,000 teachers that, that were noted. But, so that means we have 150 outstanding in some form of process and a very fast approaching deadline. Can you report to the council more specifically? That's a kind of very wide-open possibility, right? Where are those 150 are in terms of realistically being able to, to open those services and get them online by spring?
Sure, Councilmember, and so that's 6,000 seats, I just want to clarify.
Seats, that's right.
Yes, which is really important, because that adds to this conversation. If we don't stabilize those seats, the deficit will be that much greater.
That's right.
And so, yes, so right now, we're looking at a little over 200 of children that are part of a placement, or waiting to be placed, I should say, through the special ed office, but not all waiting because of seat deficit. And so we want to take that very seriously, because we don't want to end up where we are with too many seats and not the right match to what the needs are of children. And so when we even talk about this 100-plus, we are going to be looking very closely at what the referrals are, where those seats are needed the most, what type of seat is actually needed, based on the IEP of those children, based on what the recommendation is, so that we can make the right and the best decisions. We're working closely with our advocates that are, that are really in full support of getting this work done right, after years of it not being done right, and working very closely with our state partners, too. So--
Yeah, that's great to hear. And I would love to see the similar breakdown for the children with IEPs, including a clear articulation of how many children are waiting for legally mandated seats, the distribution of those seats, both not only by type, certainly by district, and obviously a clear metric of where, where the, the gaps continue to be in service. I'd also like to know very quickly about what steps the DOE is talking, is taking to ensure that young children, that 3K children with developmental delays or disabilities are receiving for their mandated services at 3K programs.
Yeah. So the related services that children are entitled to by their IEPs is the work of our special ed colleagues, and they are working incredibly hard at ensuring that the needs are identified and the related services are matched up to our 3K children, irrespective of the setting in which they are in. And so if there are any specific questions around the related service provider piece, I'm certainly happy to take those back to our special ed colleagues, and we can certainly get back to you.
It's across the board, right? I mean, the backlog is serious across the city, so I think-- It's across the board, right? I mean, the backlog is serious across the city. So I think part of this question is also how, how the agency is going to be prioritizing this issue in the budget, in the budget negotiations this year, to make sure that we have the resources to provide these services. And obviously, I know there are many elements to this. But I'd like to hear a little bit more from your perspective, how are you going to prioritize these children, and ensuring that we, we meet the backlog and make sure we have appropriate services?
I mean, and one of the things in advance, appreciate your focus, councilmember, very much on, on its population, which has not been served well traditionally. So we, we really appreciate it. Ahead of, you know, the finalization of the budget, we are expanding the team of itinerant physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech therapists, who do serve the pre-K, 3K population. So we are expanding that pool to make sure that students are getting their related services in a timely fashion. But, you know, it is a, it is a area of chronic shortage, so.
And what does that mean specifically, expanding the team?
That means we're, we're hiring an additional several dozen of these related service providers.
How many do you currently have?
That'll have to, I'll have to get the current number. And we'll get you the number that we're, that we are adding to that team as well.
Great. And I just, if Chair, if I, if you, if you may, in, just in terms of some of the earlier conversation around reduction, cut, shifting, all these incredibly mercurial words, you noted that there was an additional 6,000 seats. Did you mean, in the context of 16,000 vacant seats, that 6,000 seats were filled from the current enrollment?
I think that, I think, councilmember, that number came from Councilmember Wrestler talking about the, you know, the, the reduction in stimulus money for 3K?
No, no, you, you just mentioned in your testimony that you added, that the agency added 6,000 seats. So I'm, I'm asking, we, we noted there are 50, 50 some odd thousand, 16,000 are vacant.
I'm sorry.
We're using adding, and I'm asking, are you, are you really saying that you just filled 6,000 seats more this year than last year? You're not adding new seats?
I was, I was thinking of something different.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so thank you. Well, we can certainly clarify. So going into this school year, in this September, 8,000 additional 3K seats were added to areas where there was unmet need, across a variety of districts. So that wasn't just adding children to unfilled seats, but it was adding seats to where they were actually needed.
Okay, so it doesn't add the top number. It's, it's still shifting, right? You're suggesting that they're being shifted to the need as opposed to-
That actually increased our, our overall 3K capacity. It did. So it actually added an additional, there were already existing seats that were unfilled and not being used, but there were 8,000 seats that were coming in as part of an old RFP, previous RFP, I should say, that were going to meet unmet need across New York City. And so we were able to bring those online, so that we can serve communities in the immediate.
Okay, you, you understand the disconnect with adding and subtracting, and adding and subtracting. And yet, yeah, it's, it's still utterly confusing. In terms of similarly, actually, you know what, I'll just leave it there, because I, I think there's definitely a semantic disconnect around what is, what is being filled and currently, what is being shifted, and what is being cut. And yet, we still, I would just say, you know, representing a district in South Brooklyn, the need is significant. And to hear 16,000 vacant seats just makes my hair fall out, given that we have residents every single day. We see the struggle, particularly with undocumented children. And we are absolutely happy that the program was set up, the Promise program. We will require, we will demand and advocate that that be baseline. Our families cannot be left behind. They are important parts of our community, so for the record. And lastly, I would encourage you all also to consider the partner with our office. I think, you know, we are often, we are, we're meeting residents in the community. It would be amazing to have actually some face folks come to our district offices and provide those services closer to where people are, as opposed to always having them go outside. We have language accessibility, we are in the community. And unfortunately, city agencies seem not to, we spend half of our, our budgets calling city agencies to do the work they're supposed to be doing anyway. So I would encourage greater in-district participation with your staff in our offices.
We would love to do that. We can, councilmember, have family welcome center staff come to you to help enroll, you know, families, or just, or just provide information to families. And just on the, understand the, how are you adding seats when you have empty seats? As it, you know, as I think you know, because this exists in your, in your district in Brooklyn, we have some neighborhoods where there's lots of empty seats and struggling providers. And then we have other neighborhoods with wait lists. And we have neighborhoods where there's empty pre-K seats, and a big need for infant toddler seats. And so, you know, the seats that we're adding, we're obviously trying to target them into areas where we have wait lists, where we know there, there's a need. So that's the disconnect. Certainly, we don't want to add gasoline on a fire and create just additional empty seats. And we're not seeing additional empty seats. We're seeing that number come down somewhat. But adding the seats where there's wait lists doesn't alleviate the, the problem in, in places where there's, there's too many.
And, and councilmember, if I could just add, if you have any family inquiries of undocumented families in particular, looking for early childhood, between both our Head Start programs and any of our School Day, School Year programs, I want to make sure that we're supporting and getting them the information and access that they need. So please, please let us know. So we will continue to partner. And to the First Deputy Chancellor's point, FaceTime is incredibly important. So we would be happy to join any of those events.
Yeah, I will say, we have incredible local providers, who need all the tools, because they are doing the face-to-face, not the, you know, bus ads. They're actually in community grinding every single day. So-
That's what matters.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you. Just a couple of follow-up questions. And the 8,000 seats that you added, where are they? How many of them are filled?
They are across a variety of districts. We can get the actual enrollment number on those and get back to you in the current state, exactly where we are right now. But yes, they are in places where there was need, to the First Deputy Chancellor's point.
Thank you. Local Law 20, the DOE is required to post annual data on preschool special education by November 1st. We noticed that it has not been posted on the record. Can you tell, tell, for the record, when, when are you expecting to post that data?
Check on that. I wasn't aware, Chair, but we will absolutely meet our, our obligations.
I got you. You know, I'm always watching.
Yeah. Thankfully, thankfully, Chair.
Always watch, I got my eyes on you.
We will come back with a specific date for you. Absolutely.
Thank you. To piggyback off of Councilmember Velez, about the undocumented students, it expires this June. Is that a priority in this year's budget? I know for me it is, because I've, we fought to get that on. And it was, no child should be without, and I think Mark would say that, because I always say that to him, no child, it wouldn't be universal if every child does not have a seat. And that includes our special need, our ENL students, and of course, our new New Yorkers and our undocumented students of this city.
Are you talking about Promise NYC?
Yes, ma'am.
So that is actually an incredibly wonderful initiative. And so thank you for all of your support. I think it's a game changer for the city. That incredible work is actually being led by ACS. And so we are, you know, working in close partnership with ACS to gather any information that we can, to see how we can make sure that we are supporting our children and our families directly. So I'm sure there's more to come around what that will look like, what it'll, what it'll feel like in terms of timeframe or extension, and can certainly continue to have that conversation.
Definitely. Thank you. Earlier, we talked about payment. We wanted to know, why can't the DOE increase the advance upfront to, to increase access, and also to allow cash, cash flow to the providers, and reduce paperwork?
So again, I think these are great questions. You know, these, you know, we've heard some other councilmembers ask the same, and I think we've, we've leaned into that, you know, previously. The standard around the city has been, and you know, we've been in contact with a, a number of city agencies on this, is about 25% for an advance. And we actually are doing 35%. We've eliminated burden sum requirements, which is a number of paperwork requirements and documentation requirements. And so these are the systems changes that we're putting into place, and we're happy to keep exploring what else can be done, whether that be a greater advance, whether that be a different system, whether that be both, right?
So, you know, yes, we're, we're, we will absolutely consider that again. You know, this is the backbone of our whole program. These providers are the backbone of our whole program. They're wonderful people doing incredible work. So if it's a larger advance, we're going to look at that, even though it's a pretty healthy advance right now. If it is changing the way we do invoicing, absolutely. There's no law that I'm aware of that says it has to be done monthly, for example. We've already reduced the paperwork with Promise. They were literally, Cara talks about sending us photocopies of, of receipts. They don't have to do that anymore, thank goodness. But I'm sure there's more we can do. So we will continue to, and we will continue to explore how they can get day-to-day, at elbow, back office support, so they don't even have to run these things down themselves.
Which will support with managing cash flow, which will support with proper budgeting, which will support with a lot of things, so that providers can do the work that they want to do, which is to serve children and their families.
That would be music to their ears. In our special, I was happy to hear that you're hiring related services for our preschoolers, because we know during the pandemic, a lot of our students did not receive their early intervention services during the pandemic. So we know that they're coming to you with a lot more challenges. So to have the related services in place will be a game changer for parents and students, to support students with special need. Now, we're going to talk about a special population near and dear to my heart. You know that students living in alternative housing and foster care always miss out on early childhood education programs. How are you reaching out and working with foster care agencies to meet the need of these children?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So thank you, Chair Joseph. I think we actually have some information here that we can share, because there's been a lot of work being done with our city partners in particular. And this has been a, a huge initiative, I know, for our, our city hall partners. You know, just some numbers, I think, that might be important that, that we've been gathering, is just, and you know, this is, could be heartbreaking in, in so many cases, right? When you think about the fact that there's, you know, over 2,000 young children in, in shelter, that are three and four, right? As a former principal, and, and, and working with so many young parents and their children, and when they themselves, who I would consider children at 16 and 17, and then with their child being in shelter, we know that that is a incredibly difficult circumstance that nobody should have to go through at any age, but particularly at a young age. And we know that about 50% of those children around four years old are those that we've matched up to learn are in our programs, in our pre-K programs. About 30% are in our 3K programs. And so there's been a, a lot of work under the mayor's blueprint, to really have a strategy focused on increased outreach and enrollment for families in temporary housing. And, and really to increase that and to, to build that across the city. And so we know that there's an incredible amount of time and energy to be putting into that work, and we are here to support it and to lean into it as much as possible.
How about our students in foster care?
In the same, absolutely the same. And working closely with our ACS partners, you know, in that work.
In the 12 districts, in the 3K universal, how, what is the percentage of the students that are living in DHS shelters? Do you have a percentage? Do you have a number?
For 3K?
Yeah, 3K.
Rough, roughly 30% from what we know. There are many more that are not necessarily in a 3K program. And so what we need to do is to really think about, and along with our city partners, what are the strategies that we can employ to make sure that we're connecting families to resources, especially at a critical time when they're in temporary housing.
Yes, you know, that's important to me. Yes, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Gutierrez. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chair.
Earlier, we talked about batch processing of invoices. Has that been helpful for our providers in resolving payment backlogs for FY22? And will you extend that to providers' ability to provide and submit multiple months of invoice for FY23 and future years?
That is something that providers had talked about when we first identified there was a, a, a issue with back invoices that needed to be submitted from the previous fiscal year. And so we worked hard at making sure that that was a enhancement made to the, to the invoicing system, to happen to support the rapid response team's work of getting in submissions for FY22. And so we saw an incredible increase to support that work. And not all providers took advantage of that, right? And so they have two options. They can batch invoices at one time, and they don't have to, and we saw that as well. And so we are going to be opening that up again for FY23. We have shared that with providers widely. And that is really to support any of the back invoices that are happening right now for FY23 as well. We want to make sure that we can provide all the supports possible for providers, and to support their operations for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Earlier, we talked about pay parity for our directors, support staff, and educators. What is the cost? What is that? What's the fiscal commitment?
We don't have that, I don't have that number. I know that there are some studies that are going to be conducted, I think more on a citywide level, to really understand what the, the gap is in salaries, and to understand best. Because again, it does range. It ranges across our settings. It ranges across our providers. And it ranges based on credentials.
And you'll be providing support and, and outreach to make sure that we're supporting these?
100%. We have to support our workforce that's serving our young children, some who have been doing this their entire career. And they are some of our most beloved teachers among our center-based programs or our family childcare providers. And so we want to do all that we can to support them in furthering their own degrees and credentials.
Thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Thank you, Chair, and I apologize for being here. It's just next door. No, no, no. I just want to uplift Chair Joseph. She's been a tremendous, tremendous voice, leader, and champion for our daycare centers and 3K. And this is, it's a difficult committee to chair. So I just want to acknowledge you, because you've been sitting in here for hours as well. And I also just want to extend my gratitude to you, Deputy Chancellor. I know I missed the whole hearing. I will be touching base, because I know it's not, I know we're not where we need to be, as far as paying these providers. And we're not where we need to be on pay parity, but I just want to acknowledge that you've been incredibly responsive in my district. And I hope that, you know, the next time you're here, we're talking about, applauding about how well, and how much more streamlined, and how much further we are to, to getting to where we need to be, to uplift our community. So that, that was, my question was really saluting our Chair Joseph. That's it. And thank you, Deputy Chancellor.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. This is a work I do in partnership with my 20 colleagues. Thank you so much for your support. Thank you. I think that's all my questions. Thank you both.
Thank you, Chair Joseph.
Thank you so much, Chair.
I told you, we don't want to be here next, in three months, again, having the same conversation with my providers. We want to make sure we resolve this, as my colleague has mentioned. And we work in this, in partnership.
Thank you. And we thank you for your partnership-
Thank you.
-and support.
Thank you so much to DOE, and thank you, Chair. We will now turn back to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. So our first in-person panelist, Sarita Subermanian, Rosemarie Sinclair, Mary Chang, Patricia Left. Please make your way to the table in the front. Sarita Subermanian, you may begin your testimony.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, and my-
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, and my name is Sarita Subermanian. I'm Assistant Director for Education at the New York City Independent Budget Office. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at this oversight hearing. My testimony includes a lot of detail on the budget that I'm going to largely skip over. I'll touch upon a few points. I'm going to focus on the payments to 3K and UPK providers as of the mayor's preliminary budget release last month. We looked into the city's financial management system, and I'll report on the following amounts. The budget for this fiscal year, the commitments reflecting contracts that are registered, invoices that are submitted and approved payment or invoices already paid, and expenditures reflecting payments made. Expenditures are a component of commitments. Therefore, a large difference between these two numbers suggests a potential delay in payments after DOE has agreed to make payments. I will compare these amounts to those from the preliminary budget last year to see if a larger share of payments have been made so far this year. Finally, IBO supports the passage of Intro 843, as it would bring increased financial transparency to payments to early childhood providers. As the city expanded 3K, it has relied increasingly on participating New York City Early Education Centers, or NYC EECs. Last school year, 74% of 3K students attended these centers. In contrast, only 51% of pre-K students attended these centers. In addition, the city's expansion of 3K relies on federal COVID aid that will expire by the 2024-25 school year, and that will need a gap of $92 million in additional funds to maintain the program at the current levels. In addition, the Adams administration's in the preliminary budget last month included $70 million in a fund managed by the city's Economic Development Corporation as part of an effort to expedite payments to the city's contracted providers that were not paid for at least 75% of their annual contract last school year. Another $1 million is being dedicated to a childcare marketing campaign, which may also include 3K. These funds were included in the corporation's fiscal 2023 budget. That's outside of the Department of Education budget. Tracking payments to providers, we analyzed how payments to providers for 3K and pre-K students compared this year versus last year, when many providers began reporting payment delays. The payment process is divided into four steps. First, the DOE must register contracts with the city's Controller's Office. Second, providers must submit invoices based on actual enrollment. Third, the DOE must approve invoices. And finally, the DOE makes payments to providers. Delays in payments last year were due to issues with providers submitting invoices and issues with DOE processing payments. Lower-than-expected enrollment in 3K has resulted not only in a reduction in the budget by the Adams administration, but also affected invoice submission by providers who were unable to meet enrollment targets. Based on our analysis, it appears that fewer delays in registering contracts and receiving and processing invoices from providers, reflected in a greater level of commitments, have led to an increase in overall expenditures this year compared with last year. As of the release of the preliminary budget, 79% of budgeted funds to 3K and pre-K providers had been committed, meaning the city had agreed to make payments to providers. As of the preliminary budget last year, which actually was released about a month later than this year, only 61% of funds had been committed. In terms of actual expenditures, a larger share of this year's budget has been expended compared with a similar time last year. This year, 60% of budgeted funds have been spent, $500 million, as of the release of the preliminary budget, compared with 44% of last year's budgeted funds as of last year's preliminary budget. When we looked at expenditures as a share of commitments, however, we find a similar share this year compared with last year, indicating that once the DOE agrees to make payments, there does not appear to be much difference in the timing of payments compared with last year. As of the release of the preliminary budget this year, $152 million had been committed but not yet expended. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Rose Marie Sinclair.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph. My name is Rose Marie Sinclair, and I'm the Executive Vice President of CSA, the Council of School Supervisors and Administrators. We represent thousands of professionals who provide leadership in our public schools, central offices, and in our city-funded early childhood centers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of our early childhood directors and assistant director. I'm sitting next to one. In October, I testified concerning early childhood programs dealing with delayed invoiced payment, which led to unmet payrolls and prevent CBO centers from getting necessary resources to support their daily operations. CSA is absolutely grateful that the committee has pushed to help expedite the budgetary and invoicing approval process for centers and is following up on this. Now, I just want you to know that we are pleased to share that we have been meeting with the DOE. We've been asking for various documents, and we've been sending it back and forth, and then sending it to our providers to say, wait a minute, did you really get this? And so forth. There are some improvements, which I'm very grateful for. There are some improvement, and we will continue to work collaboratively with DOE to ensure all, and I underscore, all centers are getting invoiced payment in a timely manner. In addition, the story must be told that leaders of these centers still earn far less than DOE counterparts, even though virtually all of them have the same, have you heard this word, credentials and administrative duties. The historic pay inequity is especially troubling, because they, meaning our directors, have been a lifetime, and you know this, a lifeline, rather, for our city's families. They lay the foundation for children's entire education as well as their eventual careers. They continue to serve children, often way beyond their workday and without a contract since September 2020. 92% of our directors and assistant directors are women of color. We continue to say thank you to the city council for all the hard work, and I know it's hard work, that has been done to ensure there is pay parity in the workforce. There is power in the council's posture. CSA also wants the leaders of these centers to know that their condition now will not be their conclusion. We want the frequency to change for them, where pay parity swallows up pay disparity. We ask that the city council help ensure that the city budget includes funding for the equitable salaries they deserve and have earned. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Mary Chang.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Joseph and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Mary Chang. I am the Director of Childhood Development Services at Chinese American Planning Council. CPC's FCC, Early Childhood and Schoolage Centers are critical safety nets for thousands of working-class AAPI and immigrant families throughout New York City. In addition to providing childcare for low-income families, CPC's Childhood Development Services staff are instrumental in supporting the growth of children of color and with disabilities. As we enter another year of contracting with the DOE, we continue to be frustrated by the vendor portal system, which is a system created by DOE in hopes of unifying enrollment, attendance, and budgeting and invoicing. But the system is plagued with issues. For example, in FY '22, we were severely delayed in payments. To date, we are still awaiting five months of outstanding invoices for our services between six centers. The DOE only changed their system for FY '22 to allow multiple invoicings to try to rectify the severe delay of FY '22. But instead of learning from the last year's inadequacy for FY '23, they went back to month-to-month invoicing, which resulted in severe delays for payments in FY '23. To date, FY '23 has, for FY '23, we have only received two of our invoices for July of 2022, out of two budgets that were awarded. Only last week did we get all of our budgets awarded to us and approved to us. I understand a notice came out last week to allow for multiple, this week, to allow for multiple invoicings starting the end of February, but this shows you how inadequate the system really is. Also, we are facing multiple issues with certifying attendance, which is linked directly to our invoicing. The issue that we are plagued with enrollment and attendance system that isn't accurate, and unfortunately, we have no way to rectify the discrepancies on our own. We have to diligently await for the occupational analysts to correct the issues we find. This is taking upwards of four to eight weeks to correct. This delay in rectifying the issue leads to delay in invoicing for the work we are doing, not to mention, we are receiving multiple notifications to state we must certify our attendance by the fifth of the month, after providers who failed to meet the requirements may be subjected to the following. I'm not going to list it all. I will send you the email. It is the tone in which this is written that is very penalizing on the part of the provider. However, the issues lie within DOE providing the CBOs with not only accurate attendance lists, but also timely ones as well. So, we analyze our enrollment and attendance lists so closely, because we know that it's directly linked to percentage of reimbursement that we are going to receive back from the DOE. So, we must do our due diligence as directors. However, it is very frustrating when we can't hold them accountable or penalize them for creating the systemic issues. We call for DOE to decouple the attendance from the invoicing, as we are still required to anticipate for service for the amount of children we are contracted for, and a reevaluation of the vendor portal system. And unfortunately, with the centralized enrollment system, we have no control over who DOE awards the seats to, and every year, we have seen a fluctuation in the number of awarded children to our center that does not meet the capacity amount we requested. Families usually enroll on an online system without truly understanding the discrepancy and details of each seat. This confusion isn't just for immigrant families. Even within educated, English-speaking families as well, navigating a public system should not be this hard for families. We want families to walk in and make their choices based on a full knowledge of our programs, not from behind a screen. This is, this way, we can really support the process, and they truly feel supported in what they, what they're applying for. Our families feel unsupported and confused by the system. They blame the CBOs for not being transparent, and it leads to jumping between schools. But at the end of the day, CBOs are left holding the rest of the bill because DOE didn't provide enough children to begin with. All these issues leave directors really standing behind a computer screen instead of focusing on the children. There is a gross imbalance between the business aspect of education and the quality care of education. We understand the need for both, both as a provider, but in DOE's current state, it is severely straining our program's quality and sound fiscal practice and putting it at risk. This is why we are demanding that the city council and the mayor correct the gross inadequacy of DOE invoicing and enrollment system to fully invest in our workforce and ensure that children receive the quality education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Patricia Lett.
I'm still technology challenged. All right, thank you. Your mom raised you correctly. Thank you. I believe protocol has already been established, but I too bring greetings from the Brooklyn Sunday School Union, of which I am the president. I'm here to speak on, I need this candy, it's my allergies. I'm here to speak on anniversary day, and I must say that I served 31 years and four months with the Department of Education. I retired in 2019. I hold a master's in history. And for me, anniversary day is our history. Anniversary day was established in 1829. Our organization was organized in 1816, primarily for the purpose of economic building up here in Brooklyn. There were people who said they wouldn't live in Brooklyn for free rent. The children were out of control. The infrastructure was bad. There was a high rate of illiteracy. So, we began with that, or the organization began with that, but then they wanted to do something for our children. They needed to be educated. Hence comes about Sunday School, because you couldn't get them through the week, because they had to work, and you could only get them on Sundays in the afternoon. And this was done after a model that they had viewed in, in England. I come at this time to state that I am in full support of the Wally becoming a public school holiday. I believe that everyone has the right to celebrate their history. It says who we are. We need to know where we come from. And I talk sometime a little bit too much, but I got to tell this little story. I remember teaching, and a fight broke out in the back of the room, and I said, what happened? And one of my students said, he called me such and such, so I hit him. But my reply to him is not what people call you, it's what you answer to. When you know your history and who you are, no one can take you out of that method. I'm also reminded of a quote that says, "A people without knowledge of their past history, origin, and culture is like a tree without roots." You're unstable. You have nothing to stand up with. New York City is a place of diversity and inclusion. We welcome everyone. We used to refer to New York City as a melting pot. Some people do something, but we can see what's going on with the people that are here. We embrace, we welcome everyone. We're a very diverse city. Again, as I said, I'm asking that anniversary day remain on the calendar. I don't see why our day that was given to us in 1905 by the New York State Legislature, all right, record, for just Brooklyn only, and in 1959, under a consolidated law, Article 52, Number 2586, and I'm going to bring it in, 2586, and it was signed by Governor Nelson A. Rockefeller. We've been around a long time. This day has been around a long time. And I just, again, I'm just going to reiterate that I asked that, and I'm impressed of what I saw here today. You guys are on the money. You know your stuff. You represent your constituents well. I don't give praise out easily, because I'm a tough taskmaster, and I'm particularly proud of you as women, holding it down. You show that you're not just beautiful, you got a brain. And as I said, I see too much talent in this room for you not to be able to work this out, and for everyone gets to keep their history. As I said, I worked in, I know it's a 180 days you got to maintain in order to get federally funded, but we going to do it. We going to work it out. And I have to acknowledge some of my sponsors for this day, the AACO, which is the African-American clergy and elected officials, Chair Dr. Robert Waterman, where the Assemblywoman from the 55th District, Latrice Walker, is first, is first vice president, and the Honorable Hakeem Jeffries, our new speaker, is second vice president. All right? We're also endorsed by Bridge Street Development, Footsteps to Follow, which is a group, because I target my young people. We do workshops on goal-setting, financial literacy. I have to acknowledge the Department of Agents, because I love my seniors, because we stand on their shoulders. They pave the way for what we do. And let me see, I'm going to, as I said, oh yeah, and I have to acknowledge on the state level, Assemblywoman Stephanie Zinneman, and again, Latrice Walker, who's always there for us, and they participate in everything we do. I thank you for your time. I'm sorry if I stayed too long. And I have books that I've written. I compile the history. I'm so glad you drummed them down. I got four books. So, if you ladies want to read up on anniversary day, and the Brooklyn Sunday School Union, you're more than welcome. And if some of them need the book, we're on Amazon, okay?
Thank you so much. Could you state your name for the record?
Sure, Patricia Lett, L-E-T-T.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for the history lesson. I appreciate that.
I'm a teacher.
I know. I'm a, I'm a forever educator, too. I just left the classroom last year to come do this job.
And you're doing it well.
Thank you. I have a question for Sarita. How can we make this better? On-time payments, providers, seats being in the right place?
It's a tough question. You know, to be honest with you, I need to understand a little bit more about the processing. And so, I actually, in preparation for this, did start making some calls to really try to understand, you know, the steps from the registering the contract to the invoice, and, you know, what exactly makes a commitment? And so, you know, that is work that we're trying to do to understand exactly how the process works before we can really speak to what can be improved in that process. One thing that did pique my interest was Deputy Chancellor Weinberg talked about the breakdown between like slots or capacity. the breakdown between what, like slots or capacity. Our data just focuses on actual enrollment, so I don't have that data on capacity, so I'd be very interested in learning more about that. There was also a discussion about the application process, and that's also some data that I'm planning to request. We do get data on the kindergarten choice, middle school, high school choice application processes, but I do want to take a deeper dive into the three K and four K application processes, and that would allow us to answer some of these questions about the, when students do apply to programs and don't get the seat offer, where is that happening? To try to better understand where the, there is a mismatch between seats and, you know, actual enrollment. In terms of the process, I'm, again, I'm not quite sure, I need to have some more conversations, maybe with the DOE also, to understand the different systems. I'm not so familiar with Passport, for example, and I, I wasn't aware that they were trying to consolidate both the, I know that they've been working on trying to get better enrollment data, because that's something that our audited register files have been delayed for the past several years because of the pre-K enrollment part of that. So, I know that they are trying to, you know, get that system more accurate, I think, from the provider specifically. So, yeah, I want to try to get more information on these different processes before I can really speak to what, what we can do to improve the payment process.
Yeah, what recommendations we can also make to, so we're not back here having the same conversation. I would say in October, you're back again, having the same conversation. CSA, how much is it going to cost us?
I like the fact that the city council mentioned before gave a recommendation of forty-six million.
Hmm. Forty-six million. Let me write that down. In order to get pay parity for our educators.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we were saying that even if we have a path to pay parity, that, you know, that would be great, you know? I mean, we, we discussed with different ones, and then the, the statement was about credentials, of course, which we already told them that, that our members do have credentials, but also the fact that the same centers, you have a path for teachers. You started the path. Let's start the path for who's leading the centers.
Got it, got it. And longevity? You also talked about longevity.
Yes, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patricia, thank you. Continue teaching and spreading your knowledge. I know. We are forever educators. Yeah, they sent me an email last week, too. Thank you so much. Thank you so, oh sure, thank you. Oh, I know you will. I know you will email me. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you so much, panel, for your testimony.
Thank you so much to all of our panelists. If there's anybody else in person who wishes to testify, please see the Sergeant-at-Arms in the front of the room. We will now move on to our virtual panelists. Again, please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. Our first virtual panel will be Betty Baez Mello, Lupe Hernandez, Jeremy Kaplan, Chris Banks, and Dana Abrazari. Betty Baez Mello, you may begin your testimony.
Starting time.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss early childhood education in New York City. My name is Betty Baez Mello, and I'm an attorney and the director of the Early Childhood Education Project at Advocates for Children of New York. Over the past ten years, the city has greatly expanded access to early childhood education programs by launching pre-K and three K for all, and more recently by implementing Promise NYC to increase access to programs for children who are undocumented. However, making three K truly universal is not only a matter of adding seats, but of ensuring access to preschoolers with disabilities and other historically marginalized groups of children. At AFC, we've heard from numerous families who needed a preschool special education classroom placement for their child, but were told that there was no seat available. At the end of last June, eight hundred preschoolers with significant disabilities were waiting for seats in their legally mandated preschool special education classes. Many of these children are diagnosed of autism, are non-verbal, or have delays in multiple areas of development. These are children that stand to benefit significantly from early childhood programs, and the city cannot leave these children behind. We've also heard from families whose children with disabilities are in three K and pre-K general education classes but are not receiving their legally mandated special education services, such as a part-time special education teacher, speech therapy, or counseling. According to the DOE data, one in four children with IEPs in three K and pre-K for all programs did not receive their full mandated services by the end of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year in violation of their legal rights. While there's more work to do with, while there's more work to do with the council's support, the city has taken some important steps to help address these systemic legal violations, including opening hundreds of new preschool special class seats, committing to addressing the shortage, the shortage of seats by the end of the spring, opening integrated classes, and hiring dozens of related service providers and staff to help address delays with preschoolers with IEPs. However, the city is relying on eighty-eight million in federal COVID-nineteen stimulus funding this year to fund these initiatives, funding that will be expiring in fall of twenty-twenty-four. So, as you consider next steps in sustaining and expanding three K, it's critical to also work to sustain and expand these initiatives so that preschoolers, so to sustain these initiatives, as serving preschoolers with disabilities is not optional. Similarly, while some seats remain empty, the city's three K and pre-K for all programs are underserving children in temporary housing, who could greatly benefit from having a safe, consistent, high-quality preschool program, and children from immigrant families who have historically been excluded from certain programs because of their immigration status. Plans to assess need and determine the location of classrooms needs to include increased access and outreach to families of children who are disproportionately left out of these programs. To sustain recent progress, we urge you to ensure that the city funds funding for Promise NYC so that children can access all three K and pre-K for all programs regardless of their immigration status. Funding for this new program, which just launched in January...
Time expired.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next panelist, Lupe Hernandez.
Starting time.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Lupe Hernandez, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. I will speak, be speaking to you as, in my own capacity, as a New York City parent that has recently gone through the process of applying for the Early Learn Childcare Program. My son actually just finally got into this program. It was his first day this week. We have actually qualified for this program for the past three years. However, I had no idea. And he didn't just now get a seat because there were not enough. He's actually only the third student in this class. There were only two other students in this Early Learn class. It's actually because it took over a year for me to figure out how to apply. For those that don't know me, I've testified many times regarding education in this space. I'm a member of the Community Education Council for my district. I live in the education space. And still, I could not get access to be able to get information, to even figure out if I was eligible. Once I did get the information, and I got this just about three weeks ago, only because I finally got a response, they thought I was emailing regarding the three K applications that just went live in January. And I had to, I had sent emails about eight times this year, asking, "How do I find out if I qualify, and what is the eligibility requirements, and where do I apply?" I find that Dr. Cara Ahmed spoke about these programs having to enroll from the program itself. It would have been nice to have known that. This information could have been easily accessible on the New York City Public Schools website. At the time, and for the past year, there was no way to see for yourself if you qualified for this infant toddler childcare program, such as Early Learn and three K, extended day and year programs for the low-income families. There was nowhere published the income eligibility thresholds for family households. I had to, once I got the reply from the enrollment office, thinking I was asking about three K, and I reiterated, "No, my email clearly asked about the Early Learn application." And they told me to now look on the my school's application directory to find a site that offered the program, and then call the site directly to find out if they had a seat. If that site has a seat...
Time expired.
Then enroll you.
You can continue.
Thank you. The website only gave you an application, email to find out if you were eligible or how to apply. It just seems more simple that they would give this information. Well over a year ago, I am well-resourced, I would have reached out to whomever I needed to and did the legwork. They do put the burden on the families, I want to point that out. But they should just at least give this information. They recently changed the website. I looked today after hearing her testimony, and they now include some of this information, but I have screenshots, and I will send to you the many emails that I sent that were never replied to, because this program was through ACS. And when it got changed over to the DOE, DOE did not do anything to inform families how to properly apply. And I think there are thousands of families that are eligible for these seats, and these seats would be filled if families actually knew, one, if they were eligible, and two, how to apply and access them. Again, I live in this space, and it took over a year for me to get a, a space. And I will say this, they're right, he got that seat in two weeks. But just imagine if I would have had this information a year ago, when I, I actually emailed them November of twenty-twenty-one. And I emailed them several times after that, not a single reply, not a single reply. And I, I think the outreach is beyond lacking. They need to have, and, and when it comes to our students in temporary housing, every one of our shelters should have somebody enrolling our under-five into whatever program that, that we know that they qualify for. I think the six thou, sixteen thousand seats would get filled pretty quickly if we, if we actually put in the work. And I will submit my, the rest of my written, because, thank you very much for this opportunity, but I want to really stress that even a parent like myself that lives in this space could not get my son into a seat until a year after. That's prolonging any services he may need, because he, he could have been identified over a year ago, and now we're just now getting into this program. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Lupe. Jeremy Kaplan?
Yes, hi, this is Jeremy. I'm here from Sunset Park. I'm a, I have a, a son right now in four K, and I really want to thank Rita Joseph and also my council member, Alexa Viles, for the work that they've done on this. I was at the hearing in October. It's incredibly frustrating to feel like there's a lot of the same issues going on, and I've been hearing from some friends in Flatbush about daycare center, new daycare centers that are closing, and it's incredibly distressing. It's such a lifeline. I know so many parents who, New York City would not be affordable unless, especially with childcare, unless for this program. There's no way that we should be readjusting seats or any euphemism that we're talking about. When I hear them say that, you know, there's these unused seats, I think that's purely a failure of outreach to, you know, local organizations, to council members to get those seats, and, and especially when I'm hearing that a lot of those seats are, are in the Bronx, too. I, I think that's primarily just a terrible lack of outreach to immigrant communities to, to reach people in their, in their languages. I know in Sunset Park here, I dealt with this myself. My son was going to three K, and the program itself actually dropped us three days before because they had too many people enrolled for three K and thought they could take more seats on, not realizing that they had a limited amount of three K seats, and they had extra four K seats, and they thought they were all the same. So, three days before, basically, starting three K, we got transferred to another, you know, three K, which, which was fine, I'm glad that luckily we're on a waitlist for that. But I think that in general, it just demonstrated that providers here, and this was a provider in Sunset Park, was, was still not clear about the, the rules and regulations, and that, that shows, you know, some big issues on communication with providers. And then I also think in general, we need to really look at this program not as, once we've built the capacity, we need to see how we bring in these community nonprofit providers into, under a BOE umbrella, and to give that standards. My son currently goes to a school, Little Brooklyn Pre-K, that is BOE, and the standards are great, the teachers are fantastic, it really is education, and, you know, wonderful teachers, and I know a lot of...
Time has expired.
...nonprofit providers have that, too, but I think the importance is, we're seeing the lack of, this hodgepodge of throwing providers together was mainly because, you know, we didn't have the seats. I think we need to think about how we really integrate this so we don't have these problems, and that fully bringing a lot of these programs into the public school system, so that we're not dealing with a lack, or, you know, lack of payments, but then also various standards and different qualities and stuff. I've definitely seen that in Sunset Park, the differences between some BOE schools and from some at-home schools, and just what the teachers are, the quality of education curriculum, the offerings, and all of that. I think this really needs to be a public school solution, and to, to rid of all this sort of bureaucracy, because we're seeing so much of it that seems to be hampering, you know, providers getting paid, and for filling seats, and for students, you know, and parents to have this, this wonderful opportunity. So, thank you so much for testifying, for giving me the time to testify, thanks.
Thank you so much, Jeremony, Jeremy. Moving on to our next panelist, Chris Banks.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Chris Banks, and let me just, first of all, start by saying to the Chair, Joseph, and to all the council members that are there, thank you for the opportunity to be able to testify before the committee. I am the Chair of the Board of Directors for the Boulevard Nursery Daycare located in Brooklyn, Eastern New York, and we have been in existence for quite a couple of years in the community. We're a staple in the Eastern New York community and located right on twenty-one fifty Linden Boulevard here in Eastern New York. We provide daily educational programming to about seventy children per day, Monday through Friday, between hours of eight AM to six PM. Most recently, and I just want to get to the point, most recently, we've been dealing with issues of possibly closing due to no fault of our own, and solely on delays in payment by the city. And this has threatened the school's ability to make payroll on several occasions since October of twenty-twenty-two. And, you know, the, the, the staff, you know, we're not wealthy people, but they come in every day to work and to make a difference. And these are members of the community who are dedicated to providing the best possible outcomes for our youth, who are often forgotten and cast to the side, and leading to poor outcomes as they get older. Well, we cannot and must not allow the administrative bureaucracy to threaten programs like the Boulevard Nursery School, as it is a staple in the community and has helped so many families in our community, as the consequences will be felt solely by the staff and the parents, and most importantly, the children of our community. I am asking... I am asking and begging the committee to continue to provide the oversight. And I know there is a bill to help with this issue, but to continue to look into the causes of these, these payment delays that they have threatened the existence of, of the quality of our program and others like this across the city. The early education safety net must be protected, or we will pay a much greater price in the future. I thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today and look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Chris. Next panelist, Dana Aberzat.
Hi.
We can hear you.
Can you? Great. So hi, my name is Dana Aberzat, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to testify today. And thank you to all the care providers who have testified, and more importantly, thank you so much for the work that you do. Also, I'd like to thank Chair Joseph, who is my councilperson, for being such an advocate of universal early childhood education. So I am a parent, and I'm writing as a constituent of District 40. I, I know that this district is also plagued by lack of payments from DOE to several 3K providers for many months now, and I know that a lot of them are struggling to keep their doors open. I've also, I'm also have recently entered what I consider to be a dizzying world of navigating New York's childhood education and care system. I can attest to many of the challenges parents face, which is high costs of care, provider shortages, and months and months of waitlists, of which I am still on several waitlists. At a time when life is already very hectic as a working parent, finding reliable care only adds to the challenges. So I, I learned about the 3K program from family members in the neighborhood, and I was really ecstatic to learn about it. But as I've been, you know, trying to find care providers, I'm getting a very different sort of narrative from the actual staff than I have heard today from the DOE. I know there's lots of care centers, and when I ask if they have universal 3K, they have said that they have applied, and the DOE has refused their requests. Saying, I don't know for whatever reason, but there's a very specific number of places within my neighborhood that offers this program. So, and they also kind of, the providers also give me this kind of look and sort of a speech about how they're very uncertain about the future of the program. So I, I feel like I'm hearing quite the opposite about how their, the DOE seems very optimistic about moving this program forward, but given the budget cuts and the, the lack of payments as well as providers trying to provide care using the universal 3K system. It feels very different as a parent trying to find a spot for your child. It's also, as there's been a lot of talk about changing seats that are being unused in certain districts. And I know that the landscape is constantly changing because about three to four years ago, it was much easier to find care for especially infants and toddlers in this neighborhood, in care centers that also provide 3K, which is kind of the ideal situation where you can send your child as an infant toddler to the same
Time has expired.
Might land with 3K, but I know now we are really facing a shortage in this neighborhood. So thank you so much for the time, and I look forward to seeing the results of this committee.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your testimony. We will, I will call Zaina offline tomorrow so we can talk and find care for your child. This is something I'm very passionate about. So I'm sorry you're going through that, Zaina, but we will try to make sure your child gets care. Lupe, I know that you mentioned there was several, the website had a lot of issues, lack of information, especially around enrollment. Are there any recommendations for the New York City Public School System on how to fix it? How to make it easier for parents to navigate, especially those, there are parents that are not tech savvy. They just need the basic.
Thank you, Chair Joseph, for, for giving me the opportunity. I do. The way I found out that I was eligible, a provider that I called regarding the program and asked if they had seats, gave me this two-sheeter that was from the DOE. And I just thought to myself, why wouldn't this be on the website under this programming? Why wouldn't, you, they gave the information for Head Start. On, on the website, there was even a link to get the eligibility threshold for Head Start, which is much lower. And like I said, as of today, all of this information is there. But I have been complaining about it for the past two weeks. When, as immediately when I got the information, I said to them, why isn't this, if I would have known that it was on me, the parent, to start to look at the, the program and the sites, and I have to be the one to reach out to them, and they would take care of this application process, I would have did it a long time ago, but I had no idea. So I, I think that information needs to be not just sitting on a website, but through many multi-language that are used here in New York City. The same way I'm getting robo calls about the CEC elections, I want to hear robo calls about how to enroll into all of these programs. I, I, we need people out on the streets, tabling by subways, Union Square. You don't go to communities that we know need these seats. If families knew? And I'm, I'm also really curious of what the income threshold will be after we adjust what the state, Governor Hochul had, I think she was expanding that to expand the income. That needs to be known immediately.
Thank you. And if you heard on previous testimonies, and my colleagues and I, we stressed that there was no outreach, the lack of outreach that was invested in prior years. When the program first rolled out, we don't see those visible outreach anymore in shelters, in churches, in community. Street fairs, they tabled at every single event, they were there. We don't see them anymore. So we're calling on them to make sure they step up their game and continue to do the same type of leveling of marketing and outreach to community organizations and meeting communities where they are. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you. They should be knocking on doors. They were knocking on doors when it launched, and they need to do that again.
Yes, they were. They were doing grassroots level. They were knocking on doors as if they were campaigning to enroll children into these programs. I think the same level of aggressiveness should be, should be turned to these programs. Thank you for your, thank you.
Thank you so much to everyone on that panel. Our next panel is for those who have registered or not logged on Zoom. If you are on the Zoom and would like to testify, please use the raised hand feature. Annie Mingus Garcia, Mohammed Uzman, Gloria Alston, Adriana Alicia, Celeste Bratcher Lane, Shaquoya Jones, and Elton Dodson. I am not seeing any raised hands. So that concludes our public testimony for. Sorry, Celeste.
I did raise my hand.
Apologies.
That's okay. I'm trying to work this technology. It's hard. My phone's not working, so I had to go to my iPad. What I, I want to basically say, since we're talking about technology, my center, since I started working there, which was in 2014, always had the parents come in, and the parents didn't know how to use the technology. So the, they were registered definitely at the center in order for their child to participate in the program. This is something that is needed because parents don't always have the technology or they don't know how to use it. Because I know myself, it's difficult, especially if you have a disability. The other thing I would like to say is that I'm, I am a teacher for over 40 years. My previous daycare center closed, which was in the Bronx, Westchester, Westchester Tremont Daycare Center. In all of this, the COVID and everything and the non-funding, it had to close. I have also other staff members that I know of that had to leave the job because they were not getting paid on time in order to survive. Others have left because the amount of money being paid was not enough. I started as an assistant teacher and worked my way up to a group teacher. And I am still going to school, which means it is a hardship for me when I'm not getting paid properly by the daycare center, which is not being paid properly by DOE. Also, when the health department comes in, there are things that happen. We were closed for three months from November to January. And thank God, we were paid according to our Board of Directors because DOE said, don't pay us. This is at my new center that I'm working at. There's a lot of things that need to be worked out between DOE and the health department. Personally, I love my job. I have parents that love us also, that stuck with us with, that came back to us, but not all of them. We had a full center with lots of children, which we, we housed like 90. There was a point where we only had 30 children in the daycare center when we reopened. Right now, we still are looking at 50 or less children in our center, which we need to bring in more, which we can't bring in more because I heard someone testify that the teachers are not there. They're leaving.
Thank you. Time has expired.
Thank you so much, Celeste, for your testimony. Jeremy Kaplan, we're seeing you have a raised hand. Jeremy?
Yeah, is it actually possible to ask a question for, for Chair Joseph? I'm, I'm curious to hear about, you know, we're, we're not going to reach the, the end of the COVID federal funds for another two years. Do you have a reason for, or do you feel like there's a reason why the Adams administration is already saying that there won't be funding for it in two years? And considering we also have a budget surplus of several billion dollars, it feels like the, the money that is that gap from the federal COVID funds seems minimal. I mean, it's what, $70 million compared to a $5 billion surplus that we have currently, or maybe even more on the city level, and then a state level, we also have several billion dollar surplus. Why do you get the sense that there's a push for austerity now when we're actually not seeing that austerity? You know, we have, we have the money. Why, why is the Adams administration or other people acting like there's no money already and that this is a crisis?
I will forward that question to the New York City, to the DOE.
Thank you so much to all of our panelists, and that concludes our virtual testimony for today.
And this concludes our hearing.